We're at part. We're at our second part of our workshop that we started a couple of weeks ago. A little bit different today. We had some very nice citizens who said they enjoy watching this proceeding. So we are also not only live here, but we're doing a Zoom format. And so with that, I think I'll ask either Nat or Clementine just to talk about our Zoom format and the format of our meeting. So I'll turn it over to our assistant city manager. We'll turn it over to Clementine, our city clerk, and Clementine will give a little bit of introduction on the process today.
Yes, the city of Monterey is committed to the safe public attendance of its public meetings. Masks are required for all who attended person regardless of vaccination status, except those who are younger than two years old or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. We ask that attendees at the council workshop, please keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference and feedback with this hybrid meeting. And as we carefully return to more normal activities, we seek to continue to offer virtual methods for public participation. Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920 remains in effect, providing greater flexibility for agencies holding public meetings during the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic. If you are not joining the workshop in person, there are two ways to virtually participate. One is by joining directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And the second method is to join by calling into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at ice or Monterey.org. Since the meeting has already started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial toll free eight three three five six eight 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 six four and enter meeting ID one six zero six one eight zero three four five pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at Monterey.org slash public meetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand using the Zoom app by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. And we will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that is established for today's meeting. The countdown timer will show on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. We look forward to receiving public comments.
That's it. Okay. Then we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. And again, we're doing our hybrid. And good morning, everybody. Starting a meeting at eight in the morning is I give you my compliments and condolences. And so even though it doesn't say it on the agenda, we do want to open it up for any public comment not on the agenda on this workshop agenda. Because basically, our workshop agenda is to further discussion of processes and vision and mission. Really not a normal agenda style council meeting, but transparency and openness is very important to us. As you can see, we heard from our friends in the public and council members who wanted an opportunity to somehow allow the public to share in this without having to come in person. So we're doing a Zoom meeting as well today. But let's go ahead and see if anyone in the public here in the room in our beautiful conference center. No one here, any public comment not on the agenda online and Zoom and that? No, this is not on the agenda. I wanted to, even though we're not required to do that, I wanted to have that opportunity. Okay, good. Because we do want to make sure everyone feels that they've been included. And then after later in our workshop, Patrick will want to make sure we leave some time for any public comment. At the end of the meeting for folks who want to give their input on maybe introduce their vision and mission statements as well from the public. So we'll reserve some time at the end to have some public input if there is any. All right. Do we have any idea how many people have joined us on Zoom?
Two members of the public.
Nice. Oh, great. Okay. So with that, I think I will turn it to Hans, our city manager. Hans, did you want to do any linkage introductions?
Yeah. The first workshop was in itself very productive. Was exchanging thoughts, ideas about our, our city, our overriding principles and visions. And I thought it was asked to provide also some feedback, which we did. And which is basically the basis for today, of more detail about the mission and vision that we see as a council should be important for staff work and also for the city of Monterey. Patrick is here to bring some information on all of our processes. And they will.
Thanks. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Glad to be back in Monterey today to help you continually shape the future. We have a fairly ambitious agenda as we did last time. We want to try to finalize the mission and vision today. I want to try to put a time limit on that because we could spend an inordinate amount of time on that. Many of you submitted some draft proposals, so we want to go over those, the vision and the mission. Remember, the vision is the destination you never really achieve. It's a magnet. And the mission is the way you in order to pursue the vision. And then transition into the value drivers. Review the strategic objectives that were proposed by the city manager to see how compatible they are with what your version of the future is for the city of Monterey. And then also identify a few value drivers that are not on there that you discussed at the last session two weeks ago. Well, I did just want to do a quick recap if I could direct your attention over here. You may recall, we started last time, bless you, on the benefits of good government. We went through an exercise where you were sharing your thoughts and ideas on the benefits fulfillment to the public. Common sense guidelines and systems, safe scenic and solvent services to the community. I'm just going to hit a few of the highlights. Inspired, there was a lot of alliterations. If you recall, we had some alliterations. There was a bit of a contest there. People were doing their alliterations. Provide a sense of community, a thriving economy, bringing people together, relationships, meeting the needs, healthy communities. All sort of the notion of the narrative of what you're trying to accomplish as policymakers and community builders in building the community of tomorrow today. And we also spent some time on the trends. What's impacting the community? What's impacting the region? What's impacting the role of government? It's, we're not going to fix the trends, but it's important, especially in the vein and the confines of what you're doing about strategic planning. To acknowledge what these trends are because there are constraints as well as opportunities. And you identified the whole rise of remote work, the loss of connectivity and how that impacts the culture, public access, socialization. The whole notion of increased polarization politically, the labor shortage had a conversation about that. So we are acknowledging what you're trying to achieve, what are the benefits of good government, how that is sort of constrained and also maybe leveraged by the notion of trends. Those trends are important as you navigate the future because, as I mentioned, some of those are limitations, constraints, some are opportunities. Then we spent a good portion of time in the last session on the vision and the mission, good exchange of ideas. And you had some homework to do and we appreciate that you had a chance to turn that around. So I'd like to direct your attention to the vision. This is in your handout on page five. So if you want to go to that, please, I'd appreciate it. There's the current vision statement, pardon me. And for those who may not have the document, maybe watching from home or somewhere, I'll just read the current vision statement. Monterey is committed to being a model city for its quality of life driven by responsiveness of local government. Historical and cultural preservation, mobility opportunities, emphasizing pedestrians over vehicles, economic sustainability, a strong sense of place and good stewardship of the natural environment. Then again, for those who may not have this document in front of them from wherever they're watching, there were four proposed vision statements from council members. One, not in any particular order, the first one was respecting our past and preparing for the future. The second was to be a model of service excellence and municipal government. The third was the city of Monterey employees and those charged with upholding responsive local government. Will do so with a high level of respectful and timely services and will support our community placing at the forefront. Quality of life, a clean and safe city which holds a strong sense of natural beauty with our ocean, beaches, forests, parks, and trails. And we will emphasize mobility, preservation, access and preservation of natural resources. And we'll strive for a well-balanced economy, leading for an enduring future for Monterey and Duh. And fourth, the city of Monterey is committed to being a model city for its quality of life, driven by the quick responsiveness of local government. Historical and cultural preservation and a sustainable inclusive economy while providing a strong sense of place and good stewardship of the natural environment. And what I wanted to get a sense from mayor and council was as you look at, as you hear those, as you read through those. There's no perfect way to revise the vision, if you will. Some organizations sort of adopt one and say, that's what we really like emblematic of their notion of what they're trying to pursue. Others wordsmith it. I would like to try to at least try to manage our time here to we're not spending too much time on the wordsmithing, but get the sense of that. But I'm curious to know your reaction to those four proposed, your thoughts, your reactions, what do you, what do you think about those? Do they capture the essence? There's no right answer to this. It's simply, it's a little messy and that's the nature of these with visioning. What are your thoughts about those? Yes, council member.
Um, first of all, I think that they all capture important things that make Monterey special and that we all love and aspire to. So in that sense, they're all good. But I do feel like a vision and even our current vision is too long. It's not, it's not effective as a visionary statement, which I think should be inspiring and memorable. Simply because we tried to pack too much into it. And I think that's probably true of a few of these. It looks like somebody who did number four tried to kind of pare down our present one. And I think that was a good attempt, although I probably would pare it down even more if we decided we wanted to stick with that. Something like the city of Monterey is committed to being a model city for its quality of life, comma, strong sense of place, comma, and good stewardship of the natural environment. So I don't know, but I think probably something like that or something like one or something like two. I think three is just got too much in it, trying to do too much.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Alan. I think you're right on. You know, just the process for, for me, my approach, and I'm going to own the long one because I'll admit it's too long. But three, I started going and it was like I didn't know where to stop. And I wanted to, I wanted to kind of put everything in there that was my thinking for today. Knowing that it needs to be shortened. So on concept, I think I agree, Alan, that the vision statement should be shorter and a snappy statement. Which is nothing that I've got in three, but maybe the concepts can resonate to, to present themselves. But I wanted to acknowledge that I think we should, as a first step, agree that we're looking for brief but effective. We're looking for a snappy statement that is not a run on sentence of which I made in, in, in three. But I wanted to make sure that I had those in there so that we could have them as consideration for the concepts that are important in the vision. And I wanted to make a comment on one, respecting our past and preparing for the future. It's, there's nothing wrong with it. It's great, but I'm not sure if it says enough. And the model of service for excellence in municipal government, I think is, is good. But it doesn't really say who we are and what we want to state in our vision. But modeling the service, I think every, every governmental agency would say, we want to be a good model. But I think we need to say something more about we're, yeah, what does it mean? But I think and again, and we're moving forward. And I think the concepts that we should start with in agreeing is that it's relatively brief. That we want something that says we are moving forward, we're progressive in terms of our recognition of who we are. Acknowledging the things that are important, but how we do that in one sentence is the challenge.
Thank you. Most vision statements are somewhat pithy in their present. There's also a level of poetry to them, less is more. It's not an advertising tagline. So it's something that's your, as a slogan, sometimes they're misinterpreted as a slogan. They're really not a slogan. If I can direct your attention, just building on those points, you may recall it's up here that the vision is the overarching theme, right? Sometimes the challenge is we wanted to say so much in the vision, not recognizing the mission is executing it. Then the value drivers are really what give it lift and operationalize the vision. Sometimes visions that are too long are trying to operationalize themselves within the vision. And then there's redundancy as you get to the goals and objectives. So I, you know, their level of inspiration, it should be memorable. People shouldn't have to take out their business card to remember it. It should be something that you can reference, sort of an easy recall. Memorable, as some of you mentioned at a council meeting or conversations with members of the public or for staff to reference. So you want to make it concise, clear, compelling without it seeming so bland or generic that it doesn't say anything. Yeah.
Somebody else wanted to jump in. I don't want to monopolize this, but I was, so one was mine. I was trying to think of, you know, on the one hand, I think we are a historical city and we're a city that has a lot of respect for our past. And on the other hand, we're a changing city. We're not what we were in 1930 or 50 or 70 or whatever. So we're constantly changing. So I was trying to capture that, but I do, I do totally hear what you're saying, Ed. And so kind of in response to what you're thinking, you know, the mayor uses this line, we often all use this line. And I wonder if maybe it would just be the best Monterey is committed to being. You know, a great place to, to live, work and, and. And visit or something like that. I don't know how you, I can't remember exactly how you say Clyde, but it's memorable. And it really does, I think, capture in a lot of ways what we're thinking of. So I don't know. It's just another thought.
You know, something that resonated when you talked about a business card. Maybe that's, that's the direction we should go, something that can fit on a business card, not because we want to put it on a business card, but yet it's short. People remember it. I, I agree with that. I like that statement that you just made.
Well, basically it's, let's keep Monterey a special place to, a special beautiful place. Let's keep Monterey a special, beautiful place to live, work, and visit. It's always a good way if you ever have to greet a group or convention, it's, it's always really a good line because you often are speaking to visitors. And I think they appreciate it too.
I mean, if that's what we're going to go, I actually don't think that that's a bad direction for us to go in. I think keeping it short, I think we're, we're the comments that are the thoughts that were on my mind as the conversation has been progressing here. And I think it goes right to what you were saying, Patrick. I think these other elements that were in three and four. I think can be very well captured in the drivers that can support us. And so my hope is, is that we can find something that it's easy for us to translate what the, exactly the vision is, exactly what the mission is and what the drivers are. To folks without having to make it feel like it's repetitive and incoherent. So I think following this premise, I, I like that direction. So I guess I don't know where we go from here. I mean, I'm almost good with staying with that, maybe tweaking some of the words a little bit, but.
I'm just curious, is a vision something, a statement that's something that you see in the future of what your city should look like? Or is it now with this statement, it's something that we want to continue to move forward? Which I'm just curious about that.
I would say it's a blend, you know, some, for some communities, depending where they are. They may be in a place where they don't want to stay and they really have to have a vision to galvanize and marshal those resources because they got to get out from where they are. You don't have that issue. You're trying to fortify, solidify and continually reinforce that value proposition. So in a way, it's a vision that you have today and it also helps you move into the future.
So I don't have my glasses. Could you read it?
Sure. Let's keep Monterey a special, beautiful place to live, work, and visit. So live, obviously residential, regardless of how long you lived here, work as a place where people may work here, but not necessarily live here and visit for the, the notion of tourism, tourists visiting the, the community.
Okay.
So, so can I offer suggestions to that line?
Um, yeah, I, I kind of like that. And that simplifies and says basically what I said in my run on sentence and. You know, captures it instead of let's, it's keeping Monterey. So it's. Yeah, it just is a little bit more moving forward. And then where I, I looked at and I looked at the history and looked at the statement and that's why I moved Anna to the vision. Because that says moving forward. So wouldn't Anna go together with the vision rather than the mission? And I would just offer that if somebody wanted to look at Anna, that's a tag to the vision, then they would see another statement of vision, which is we're moving forward. So keeping, I'm trying to follow the keeping. Okay. So then to go into, if somebody said Monterey is special, it's an objective word. So what is special?
Well, again, that's what you're going to be using in the value drivers that make it special, right?
Yeah.
The word does create, and I think what you want for a vision is it's a conversation starter. So when people say, well, what is special means, well, let me describe for you what special means instead of it always being unpacked within the vision itself.
Okay, I got it. All right. I get it.
So I, I agree with changing that first, first expression to a participle. And maybe keeping straight one, I'm okay with keeping, maybe there's a different one, but I agree with you on that ad. As far as Anda goes, I thought you were the one who last time said, most people don't really know what that means when they hear it. Now it is true, then they might ask, but I just want, that's why I didn't, in my thinking, I wasn't sure we wanted to keep that. It is, maybe, and maybe Hans can speak to this. I don't know how conversant the staff is because to some extent this is also for the staff. I don't know, but I don't have a problem with keeping it other than I'm not sure that most people know what it means. But I do like the idea of having this word progress. So we are maintaining because we are a great place. We don't want to lose any of that, but we are also progressing. So I like that idea.
Yeah. And the reason, the reason that I like Anna to stay somewhere is to show homage to the history of, well, continuity to the, the recent past. But also the historical piece of the Spanish roots. So being that it's a Spanish term, it goes back to our historical roots.
And it's on our logo, isn't it? It's on our logo, which saves us money.
It's on our logo.
I.
I was just going to say with the word, word keeping, the one thing that concerns me about that is it, it makes it seem like we're not ready for change or moving forward. Like we're trying to preserve something that's in the past. And I think some people might not resonate with that. So maybe fostering or something like that, like that we're nurturing, something like that. Yeah. Continuing or, yeah.
Remember, it's a vision statement. So some communities just say Monterey is a special place to live, work, and visit.
That's something like that would be perfect. Right.
And that makes it shorter too. So.
So Allison was saying nurturing or something other than.
Nurture or something other than keeping?
Or just, yes, Monterey is a special, beautiful place.
Yeah.
Just a thought, again, it's a statement. You're saying it's a state of mind, state of being, you're doing it all.
Yeah.
Colon. Hi, could it be a colon? So Monterey, colon, a special place to live, work, and visit onda. So then you have the opportunity to, what do I mean by a special place and unpack that some? And you notice the word onda, maybe not familiar with that word. Here's what that word means and here's why we think it's so important that we've put it in our vision statement, something like that.
I think Inga just came up with our vision statement.
That's good.
Inga's had, Inga's had lots of practice with vision statements.
Right. You taught me Clyde.
Oh my, that was so painful.
So let me just recap this. Yes.
I'm not sure if there's a common understanding of what language that is. Onda in Spanish means to walk.
Yeah.
And onda in Italian means to go. Just bringing that up.
It's, it's both, it's both Spanish and Italian and got Spanish roots and Sicilian, Italian.
So when I looked up both, I mean, it's all over the place, but essentially our and a quote is kind of both. And it's moving forward. It's going forward. It's sort of in keeping with the theme of the city's past, but it is on all of our logos. So if somebody said, what's and I mean, when I became a city employee in 1980, I, I looked it up and, you know, I went to the library and got a little history on what Anna meant. And found out we had a lot of Spaniards that were still here and Sicilians. And so the historical piece was of a lot of, of how Monterey got started. But it's a good point. It doesn't really, it's not just Spanish.
If there's an interest in keeping on us, as I know we have, often Hans will sign his city manager's message with onda and then also translate it to what we mean by onda, which is forward. So we would just put on the exclamation point forward exclamation point to, to help with that, that translation a bit.
Yeah.
So on to continually moving forward or something like that is what you're saying. Just so you can, do you think people will understand that that's what it means?
I almost wonder if it, it doesn't need a translation because I think either translation, if it's, I mean, they both kind of work. But if there does need to be an explanation, that could be something that's unpacked. I think trying to keep it shorter is better is kind of my, is my thought.
So right now it's Monterey, colon, a special, beautiful place to live, work, and play onda. So it ends with a flair, which gives it a boost. That's good. And then, and you're paying homage to not only the historical roots, the genealogy of the community. But you're also making some segue between the previous vision and this one, because there is some continuity there, which is good, right? Just in the whole notion of what you're trying to build on. And remember, as I said last time, there's no expiration date on visions. There's no sort of like, we do it for 10 years, then we do another one. It really just depends on the appetite of the governing body and it says, who says, I think it's time to revisit it, much like you did. So don't worry that this is going to set your future, your predecessor, your successors up and they're going to come back and change it. Most, most communities don't make dramatic changes unless they've had serious challenges in their community. Then they, then they sort of just discard it and say, let's start fresh and have something that's inspiring and aspiring. So think about that. It's both inspiring. People draw emotional energy from it and it's aspiring that you're always moving in that direction. You're never really done. Remember, as I mentioned, a vision is a, is a destination you never achieve. It's, it's poetry in motion, if you will.
We should probably just close this, but in the sense that if we keep talking, we'll keep adding words. But should, should it be Monterey or the city of Monterey? Should you have it actually say the city of Monterey?
I think when you say just Monterey, I just would offer, I think it sounds more inclusive. I think when you say the city, then people tend to think of, I don't know, you're trying to build a community. I, I would offer your building a community, not just a city.
Okay.
Just a thought. I think it speaks to that part of people.
If, if there's an interest in putting city in there, we can replace place with city, a special, beautiful city to live, work, and play.
I think that the word place is bigger than the word city and sort of encompasses the natural space, the people, the history. Place is like a really powerful word, actually. And whereas every city is a city, but not every place is a special place.
Well, I, I think the, the comment that city signifies government to me and, and it's not everything. So I get it now.
And then it, you know, will help me satisfy the, the long-winded line that I really wanted to have in there with our ocean, beaches, forests, parks. And trails and we'll emphasize mobility. So I think place, you know, says.
It sounds like we have a sense of direction, but I did just wanted to, to offer the idea of, I think, our place, pun not intended. Of kind of leadership on the peninsula and making sure that we kind of maintain that looking beyond borders type of thing. So. maintain that looking beyond borders type of thing, so.
Okay, so Monterey colon, a special beautiful place to live, work and place, Anda. Anda.
Can I, can I make one more friendly suggestion? So I don't know that we really need the word beautiful. When we talk about what we mean by special, we can say they're beautiful natural resources around us. So does it flow better just to say Monterey colon, a special place to live, work and play, Anda? And then we unpack it with the natural beauty, the historic resources, you know, the economic vitality and all that kind of stuff?
Thoughts on that?
I, I agree. I think it does sound a little bit jumbly with having both of the words there. And again, if we're trying to make it have the punch and the flair that it could, that it kind of already has, but I think making it even stronger, I think eliminating that can be a space for us to go and explain that further.
It definitely sounds better and, and flows better and probably will be easier to remember. You're not gonna be trying to remember that other adjective. I do like the word beautiful though, um, because I think it more directly addresses what Ed was talking about in terms of how, what it, it really is the beauty more than anything else, the natural beauty. That's why I'm here, but.
Yeah, and I think I don't want it to sound too utilitarian. I think, uh, because a special place, it's beautiful, is common in every, every person's language. But if we remove the word beautiful, then to me it almost starts to not sound much uh, that resonates with me. I think the word beautiful encapsures a lot of, of what, uh, people would probably say about Monterey. But I want to hear Tyler.
Well, I, I just, I wonder if, is there space for us to maybe use that as a, a point of departure when we're going into the mission so that we really focus on that there and allow ourselves to kind of address that in a way that really focuses on the beauty aspect of it?
Well, I, I would counter, uh, or add to that, the vision statement for me is the first and most important, that is probably seen with more eyes the most and is connecting to more, uh, a wider audience. Um, but I don't think there's anything wrong with using the word beautiful or something like that also in the mission statement because we drill down into more specifics. But I just think as a specific, a thing that we're saying as a vision statement, I think it's a it's what the, the mayor has talked about ever since I've known the mayor in terms of what, why are we here and why do we love this place? Uh, it's a great place. There's no, no place other than anywhere in the world like this. Uh, but I think it's, it is a special place and it's beautiful, but I think beautiful belongs.
I'm good either way. Yeah.
Just one suggestion for flow. Oh, to me it flows better to say a beautiful, special place as opposed to a special, beautiful place that there, but it flows better saying a beautiful, special place. And then, then you have your flow and, and it makes sense and all the words are there.
Hey, he's the one that gets stuff done. It's great. Prove so. All right, beautiful, special. I would, I would go for beautiful, special.
Okay, let me, let me restate that, let me restate this, uh, so people that, uh, might be playing Scrabble with us at home, uh, Monterey, a beautiful, special place to live, work and play. Uh, play, Anda. Concise, clear, compelling, emblematic.
Works for me.
Poetry. Okay, all right. All right. No, no, okay. All right. If you would, you might want to jot this down somewhere because as we go, I so again, it's Monterey, a beautiful, special place to live, work and play. The play, I kept that word stuck in my head, Anda.
Wait a minute, visit got replaced by play? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I, that was my mistake. Yeah. A beautiful, special place to live, work and play, Anda. I kept same place twice.
Oh, you're saying visit was the word that we were trying to.
We were looking at. Oh, that's right.
I don't remember discussing visit versus play and.
And maybe I put that up there by mistake, did I?
Are you saying visits or what?
Visit.
Visit, not play.
Exactly.
My, my mistake. I don't know if I kept.
That's okay, because when you're visiting here, you could be at a convention, you could be playing, you could be, uh, uh, with your family. There's a lot of things you could be doing.
A beautiful, special place to live, work and visit, Anda. I don't know where I got play. I'm not, got stuck in my head or something.
Oh, that's fine. It does fit very well, but I think the, the word visit probably works better for us here.
Okay.
More inclusive, maybe, yeah.
All right. Okay.
I think that's what we should do.
No more. You're done. You're finished. You're done. I'm, you know, if you had mics, I'd mute them right now so we can move on.
We did take a vote by consensus. I can't say pardon.
Yeah, really.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the mission, which is on page six, the next page. And again, for the benefit of those watching remotely, I'll read these, uh, the current mission statement and remember the mission statement is how you pursue the vision. So it's a little bit more mechanical in that sense. It's not so much about poetry. It's a little bit more about the plumbing side of what you do. The current mission statement is the Monterey City Council will provide visionary policy and legislative leadership that assures a safe, healthy and economically vibrant community on you may also recall, you talked about the mission statement that you're trying to reset the mission is not so much for the council, but for the community. This is a point of reference. The four proposed mission statements in no particular order, the first one, Monterey City Council will be inclusive, transparent and visionary in order to protect and nurture what makes Monterey a great place, our history, culture and natural beauty. Second one, the city of Monterey collaborates with the community to improve the quality of life for all, for all through historical preservation, economic sustainability and the protection of our environment. The third, the Monterey City Council and their employees are committed to stewardship for our community with effective policy, respectful services and leading in all efforts for a safe, health, the and economically vibrant community for neighborhoods, all residents, business, military and visitors alike. Our mission includes supporting Monterey as a world-class friendly city, a destination with significant history and importance to the United States and a regional reputation that is viewed as welcoming to anyone who lives, works or visits our town. The fourth one, the city of Monterey is committed to preserving the high quality of life expected of our residents, businesses and visitors. The city will provide a safe environment to live, work and visit through equitable municipal services while promoting, preserving and maintaining our historic, cultural and environment assets, cultural environment assets. So thoughts?
So, so I, I would maybe start by just noticing, um, how similar they all are. Um, but I would also say that, uh, and, and I'm actually open to your thoughts, Patrick, but I think short is also good here, maybe not as short as the vision, but I think trending that direction is probably a good place for us to, to think about as we move forward. Um, but one of the things that I, um, kind of noticed that's a flow amongst them all is how Monterey is a great place and what makes it a great place is this quality of life. And then there's these other things that I see as subcomponents of this, which are this kind of inclusive collaborative um, piece of it. And then this historical reference, the economic sustainability or economic, economically vibrant community. And then the natural beauty or the, or the protection of our environment. So those are the kind of the three things that I kind of see. Um, or the four things that I see, kind of inclusive collaborative is one. The second is historical, um, preservation. Three is economic sustainability or economically vibrant community. And then four is um, the natural beauty or the protection of our environment. That fits those four kind of fit in amongst this idea of Monterey being a great place due to the quality of life. So just gonna throw that out there.
Okay. Thanks, Sal.
Yeah.
So, um, totally agree with that and, um, it, it seems to me there's a lot of commonality. There is one thing I kind of think most of these are missing, including mine, which is s- making sure, ensuring that this is a safe and healthy place. And I think that's important. Uh, we put a lot of city resources into public safety, but I don't think any of these really highlight that. Second line on three. Yeah, good point. But what I'm thinking is maybe number two could be modified. The city of Mon, I like the collaboration with the community. I think somehow that has to be in there. We don't do city government the way a lot of places do. We have a lot of community involvement and we take the time to collaborate with the community. And that's a big part of how we do what we do. And I think that has to be in there. So I kind of like that, um, and the quality of life. So the city of Monterey collaborates with the community to improve or maybe preserve or something like that, sustain the quality of life for all through, uh, the quality of life for all, including a safe, healthy, historical, dynamic, by dynamic, I'm trying to speak in one word to the economy. Uh, and beautiful place. Something like that.
Let me just throw something out there, doing a little spitballing here, uh, kind of a blending of some of this. How about, uh, we partner with the community, our, we partner with our community to improve our quality of life. Lot of inclusion you can infer from that. We, starting out with the word we, we partner, which obviously implies a lot with our community. I'm just throwing that out there just to, not to muddy the water, but trying to make less is more a little bit.
So I think as an introductory element, that's okay, but I think we do need to hear some more specificity, which was what I was, I think Tyler was speaking to and I know Ed was speaking to in his. And I was trying to do that, but really condense it with a series of adjectives, sort of each adjective, trying to capture those elements. But I like that, um, we will partner with the community, um, to ensure a high quality of life or to preserve our great quality of life, including, and then, I don't know.
I, 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 I do have a preference towards shorter because I think if we can find a way of keeping it shorter, it is more memorable and it makes it easier for us to be champions of this vision and mission. Um, and if we were able to find a way of maybe capturing those elements within our value drivers in a more concise way, it helps us to remember that as well. So it kind of like pairs it in a way that really kind of makes it easy for us to go out and, and preach that.
The, the only challenge is I think, and I, I don't know how staff feel, but you know, in terms of advocating for their various departments during, let's say, budget process or, um, you know, allocation of resources. I think it helps. I mean, obviously the drivers are a big part of that, but if we just have this one category, quality of life, that's pretty vague and almost anything could fit into that. I, I kind of feel like you need to be a little more specific in identifying here what that quality of life entails.
Yeah, and I think, I think the statement of quality of life in a conversation probably resonates, but when you drill down into it, I think it, it does need to be pulled out. I think in a mission statement, uh, we're not having to pay for these words. They're free. We can put as many words down as we want. So I think it's an opportunity for us to not leave anything out. And, and it is really a statement to the community and the employees. And also I think if we go to quality of life, I think we're better off to say what that quality of life is rather than just saying quality of life.
I, I think the only point that I was making is that if we can use the value drivers to help explain that, right? Because they're supposed to be driving what that is. It's supposed to be driving the work that we're doing. And so, um, I feel like we could better utilize that, right? Because I think when we look at our value drivers now, they're kind of longer statements that aren't as easy to remember, but if we can make them those even shorter and then kind of spell that out a little bit deeper as we're describing what those value drivers are, it can help fit in a lot of these things that we're talking about.
Yeah, and I agree that the, the value drivers are very important to, to expound on them and have the bullet points and exceed them, extend them out. But I think the mission statement, the vision and mission statement is probably about as far as the average reader will go. Um, and a mission statement is easily placed some at, at the forefront of documents on the wall, on, uh, you know, the, the back of documents that the public may see. And also on the website. So I think the mission statement has a great value uh, for a brief statement. Mine's too long. Mine's got too much in it, but I think these, these capture, you know, how, how it's placed. Uh, but I wouldn't want to say, let's just make it as short. I think it's, it's basically gotta stand on some description of what quality of life is.
So when I, I wrote number four, that's exactly what I did. It was I went to our drivers and tried to stick as much of our drivers in number four, but it, um, obviously you can't put them all. Um, and that's one of the reasons why it gets a little long is if you try to do that with drivers. So, but anyway, I like the idea of that. That's why I worked that.
So Alan said, I don't know what staff thinks. And so that gives me my intro. Um, thank you, sir. I'm a little bit scared. Oftentimes I'll be thinking something and my wife verbalizes it and I think you can read my mind and I'll say that Alan, one of the things that I wanted to really get in here is safe for all the reasons that you stated, but I will tell you from the perspective of staff, every time that we write an agenda report in whatever paragraph it is, we have to link it back to the strategic objectives or the value driver. And really a mission statement is, I think, a little bit more than the vision, but everything has to flow out of that into those value drivers. So I think your idea was great about the four areas. I think it started with three and then Alan added safe. I think that that really sets you up for those value drivers. So we can use that when we're pointing to why we are dealing with this project in the agenda report.
So, um, the mission statement is the city council's mission. It's not the city, uh, as such, it's the city council. And, um, when, when, when you look at the existing mission statement, that really isn't too shabby. So I would just bring up the existing mission statement that we have. Take a look at it and, and think if that is worthwhile wordsmithing as well.
Just, just, I'm sorry, just, just one thing to echo on Hans and, and, and chief, uh, statement with the word safe. I think is that leads into our drivers. One of the things to be aware of, it's not only for council and staff, but what staff utilizes this language for being this statement, the vision statement, and then the value drivers are grant opportunities. So when, when we look at our, our preambles for how we apply for grants for transportation, for other things, if we can point to areas within our mission statement that says safe and then down into our vision areas where it says transportation, bicycles, whatever, it helps us score points and bring more monies into the, into the cities for different projects. So to be very broad here, like the word safe, I echo what both Hans and, and Dave mentioned. And because that then leads down to the drivers and it all plays very well together for the whole opportunity.
So if I could add something, I liked, um, the, both of those past two state, uh, comments and, um, looking at the mission statement that we already have, I agree with Hans. I think it looks pretty good. I would just add after the word healthy, historic.
We gotta get water in there somewhere.
So maybe the approach is looking at the current mission statement and asking what's not there. And comparing that to the list that we've put up here. Patrick, I'm having a hard time reading some of those. I'm sorry, I spoke over you here. Read, read them for us and ask, and then ask, is anything that's up there that should be placed into the current mission statement that we, we keep and we modify that?
Yeah, and this was referenced from, uh, Tyler's comments earlier. I hope I captured those, uh, well, you talked about that what you saw as common denominators between the four proposed was a sense of inclusiveness and collaboration as far as the approach. That it was the historical, I think that was the second one. The third one was that the ec, the economic aspect and the fourth one was natural beauty. And then you, uh, there's a discussion about adding a fifth of a safe and healthy place. And the question is, what is the, if those are items that you support, are those not identified specifically in the current mission?
So, so I would just, um, offer that I, I appreciated the direction that we were going with in regards to number two, just to the extent of, um, focusing on it from the perspective of the city of Monterey as opposed to just the council. Um, and I feel pretty passionately about that. I think adding in these other five elements um, to, and, and to include the safe and healthy aspect, I think is a good direction. So if we could take that as a starting place and then just add the, I think that might be a good, a good mission for us.
Um, so some of them are already there.
No, exactly, exactly.
No, exactly, exactly.
So we're we're almost there.
So I I'm just saying, I'm just saying particularly with the the idea of of and I'm not sure the word that you used earlier, Patrick, but the idea of of collaborative or. Um I think the idea of partnership with the community. I think that's a big piece that's not currently really identified in the mission. So if we can stick with the city of Monterey partners with the community to to some, I don't know, something. With the quality of life. Um and then we can identify those those areas that we're trying to get to. And and I would just say uh one last comment, I think. So I I did number two and and the reason why I put in for all was the idea of getting to that inclusive piece that I think Alan put in in number one. Um so anyways, I think that that kind of fits that model. So if we can just kind of list those out from there, I think we might have something.
Um I'm wondering if if we could say this. So the Monterey City Council in partnership with our community. Will provide visionary leadership. I'm not really sure you need policy and legislative. I think it's a little bit muddying and confusing, actually. And so that shortens it a little bit. Uh so in partnership with our community will provide visionary leadership. That assures a safe, healthy, historic. And econo- economically vibrant and sustainable community. I think we also need the sustainable element in there. Clyde spoke to that last time about how important climate change is. That also speaks, I think, to possible grants we may want to apply for. And just uh we need to constant and it also speaks to preserving our natural beauty. And I know sustainable, Ed, I think you said last time it's a word that's overused and I tend to agree with you, but I can't think of a better word that really speaks to that. Part which I think is missing.
I would go with that.
Okay, so I I I guess I will continue to push back on the on the idea of the city as opposed to the the council, just because. I feel like. We're individual council members and none of us are going to be bound to, right? Like we can agree to, we can walk away today agreeing to saying Monterey City Council. But none of us have ownership really over that. I I mean, unless we choose to. Um and future councils as well. And so I feel like if we make it about the. Yeah, I think if we make it about the city, it's like all of us.
I I agree with you, Tyler. I think. The city of Monterey, because yes, this this is our vision, but the reality is it's staff who implement it. And it's staff who oftentimes are coordinating that collaboration with the community. So I think we. Think it should be the city of Monterey.
But that's true, but uh once again, the city, the the council is the one that sets the policy. And so a mission statement should have. Policy uh and not implementation. So to me, um even though I I I agree that should be the city of Monterey, but just so we understand that the city council sets the policy.
Right, but that's so right now, if you say the city council will provide. I we're not act- well, I guess we are providing the visionary leadership.
Well, it could be the city of uh the Monterey City Council will provide through policy visionary. Uh oh, that's already there. Paul says so. Anyway. I don't know. I I'm not saying that we should keep the city council. I'm just trying to. Give the reason why I I think that somewhere along the line, the five people that sit up here, whoever they are, should be.
So if I could offer this perspective, um i- if you. What's really a discussion here is whether it's the city or the city council. And as we talked about the last time too, the five of us are elected to represent the city. So collectively, it's up to us to lead through the decisions that we have that best represents what's in the community interest. Um and we collaborate to to obtain that. They're our boss. Um so we're making a statement in a mission statement that represents the true form of government. That we all were elected to represent the community. So a statement that this is a. Mission that is developed by the city council, I think is fair. Uh and it's also a statement that says this is what we agree that is our mission collectively. Because we have the right to put words down on papers and documents that represent the community because they elected us to do that. So I I'm okay with it continuing to say the Monterey City Council because. As Hans has said, this is a document that this council says is the mission. It's really six of one, half it does the other. I mean, the city Monterey versus the city council. I think it has a place of esteem. When we say the city council states that this is what is important to us through a mission, rather than leaving it. Uh just as a sort of generic, everybody in the community that calls themselves. Uh Monterey residents, the city. So I I. I find that it's important to say that we take the duty, the responsibility and put that into a title. And say the city of Monterey and then everything else that is the mission flows after that. So that's why I think it's important to to have the city of Monterey stated there. But that's just my perspective.
So it would say, just to to take a revised approach here, the Monterey City Council in partnership with our community will provide. Visionary leadership that is that assures a safe, healthy, historic and economically vibrant and sustainable community.
That problem is community is used twice. Slightly different ways.
Uh can we type this up and put it on the screen now so people can see it? Okay. The stakeholder, that's the butcher. The butcher Monterey City Council.
The butcher is the stakeholder.
In partnership. There you go.
Vampire hunters.
Historic after healthy. Yes. And what do you think about throwing scenic in there someplace? Keeping Monterey safe scenic and solvent. Lots about that using community twice. Because quality of life should be in there someplace. Like that one?
How about you just take off community at the end?
I copyrighted it. No, it should be in there.
Yeah, so can I start at the end and then work backwards uh where it says sustainable community? The close sustainable to me is an important word that belongs here, but we don't want to say community twice. But what are we trying to sustain? We're trying to sustain everything, but why don't we say and sustainable environment? Because then that captures, you know, what we're all about being an ocean town with a forest. So we're trying to, you know, sustain it all, manage our forest and keep the sea level rise from, you know, engulfing us. So I think. Uh sustainable environment. And I I like the flow of. The priorities that we're also saying we're visionary in leadership. And that we are looking at safe, healthy, historic, economically vibrant. And sustaining our environment. And I think we covered everything that's on that list that we identified that was important to us.
Um I think the visionary leadership implies that notion of Honda as well. We're not just preserving, although obviously we are preserving. But visionary implies that the council will provide the leadership to move us forward when necessary. For all of those um objectives.
Just to use a really simple metaphor, um this is an ensemble. So it's like if you go to pick out a necktie and you stare at the tie too long, you think, man, I don't really like that tie because it's got certain. But it's part of the ensemble with the shirt, the jacket, the belt, the shoes, the socks, the pants. If you stare at it too long, then it's that we we don't like it. So it's part of a larger um. Portfolio, larger portrait. Maybe a mosaic as you look at the, I'm just sharing that with you. So the. The value here is you're drilling down, which is good. It's also good to reflect that this is part of a larger apparatus. The vision, the mission, we as we get into the value drivers. So. I think this is good. It's memorable. It's a little longer. That's okay, but it's memorable and it's all encompassing and it's specific.
I actually was, I actually was going to add that I feel like it is too long. Um. I mean, I I I I want it to be something that I can walk around and say and and I feel like I would almost have to memorize this. And I'm I'm really. I am having a little bit of heartburn over the Monterey City Council piece, but that's not a hill I'm trying to die on at this point. I'm I I think it's fine if that's what we want to do as a group, right? But I think we don't need the visionary leadership piece. Um I just, I think that could put a bad taste in people's mouth. I mean, we're putting this out there as if we we are that as opposed to. Make creating that and making that a reality. So the Monterey City Council in partnership with the community will provide. A safe, healthy, historic environment, uh economically vibrant and sustainable environment. I think trying to shorten it up a little bit might be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So the Monterey City Council partnership with our community.
Yeah.
Will provide. Provide.
Provides.
Or provides, yeah, I I agree. It provides, get rid of the will. Visionary leadership that assu- uh assuring instead of that assuring. Because I want to say that we're committed to doing this assuring. A safe, healthy, historic, economically vibrant. And sustainable environment. So shortened it a tiny bit.
That's good. The only thing I would add there, word smithing is my favorite thing, as you all well know.
Yeah.
And on behalf of MPL and INGO probably should start off in partnership with our community comma, the Monterey City Council will. Otherwise, you've got to put in partnership with our community and commas. Move in partnership with our community. First. The Monterey City Council, et cetera.
Yeah.
It reads.
It also puts the emphasis on community instead of on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think what you put first is where stands out. And so by putting that first. It emphasizes the community rather than us. Maybe that helps a little bit with Tyler's heartburn about that. I don't know.
I I hate to uh throw a another um piece in here, but I think something that we've lost through where the conversation started was the idea of inclusion. Which is important to me because I I do feel. Um I and I hear from a lot of residents that. Um some folks in the community might get more attention on issues than other communities. And so I think it's important for us to think about. Being inclusive in regards to how we approach these things.
About if we add for all at the end. After sustainable environment.
Absolutely.
Would would that do it at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think it kind of uh it it sort of sounds like if we added it at the front in partnership and inclusive. It needs to action or. You know, it just it sort of hangs there like it needs more words and then we are back to the we're adding words to it, but inclusiveness, I think, is. Is covered by saying for all.
Right.
I mean, alternatively, you could say in partnership with our entire community, um but I'm happy with putting for all at the end too. Doesn't really matter.
Yes, I'll read it aloud. In partnership with our community, the Monterey City Council provides visionary leadership, ensuring a safe, healthy, historic, economically vibrant and sustainable environment for all. Thoughts from staff about that? Oh gee, you gave a thumbs up? I'll take that as a yes, chief, as you're now speaking in 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 symbols. So, yeah.
So. I hate to do this, but actually hearing it, it sounds like the only thing for all is the sustainable environment. By having it there. So I really think you where you want it is before community. You either say in partnership with all our community or with our entire community. And get rid of the for all at the end. It 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 needs to be there.
So so um. I think the way it's written right now, I I uh makes makes a great deal of sense for me because it really. Starts on the right foot, which I think we we want wanted to accomplish as a as a compromise maybe between Tyler's point of view and. And the remaining council to say in partnership of our community, I think that that hits at home. And I think also we we are using words that that are uh in a way. Robust enough to sustain for the next ten, twenty years. I mean, inclusiveness is 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 a word of today. It wasn't a word yesterday and tomorrow we might have a different term. So I think partnership with our community covers that to a degree. I I see Ellen's um. Grammatical issue there with sustainable environment for all. That's the fall is really uh. Pointing towards sustainable environment. And I think maybe we should work a little bit how we get the for all somewhere else in there. That that's. I think Ellen made a good point there. I mean, let's keep in mind this, this, this is our. The the mission statement will be not digested in in MPC classes that Ellen teaches with with the. Grammarical logic, but it should be a little better. I I agree with you, Alan.
Yeah, maybe I'm just throwing out a idea here. Could we put for all here? Visionary leadership for all to ensure. Or up here? All in our.
That's good. That would include, that would include our businesses. It would include our nonprofits. It would include not necessarily residents.
Yeah.
And you got an extra space at the end of environment.
Okay, so to read it again, the revised in partnership with our entire community. The Monterey City Council provides visionary leadership, ensuring a safe, healthy, historic, economically vibrant and sustainable environment. Good. Two thumbs up from the chief. So he's really excited.
I I I'm just gonna make this last comment and and if we don't go with it, it's I'm okay. Uh. I I feel like I still feel like it's too long and and I wonder if we could just. Remove the entire and say, in partnership with our community, the Monterey City Council. Provides all a safe, healthy, historic, economically vibrant and sustainable environment. Okay, all right, let's move on. I'm okay with it.
Thoughts? It's descriptive. It's it's uh fairly, it's pragmatic. It has that notion to it.
So I'm taking a huge risk here, but but I'm just saying it. Uh this needs to remember be semi. Symmetrical. To our vision statement. So I just want to say, let's throw up the vision statement on the screen as well.
Good idea.
And and just to to cross check because the one cannot go without the other in the logic and uh. I just wanna. Not reopen discussion, please, although this is your. Yeah, but I think I think we we accomplish what we want to do, but I just want you all to see it and agree.
I think that the, the vision is the thing that, that should be memorable, that we can just say without having to think about it too much. And I think it does that. And I, I think the mission shows how we're going to, in more detail, how that vision is achieved.
I agree. I like it. I like them both. And the vision statement is the one that's really easy to, you know, memorize. Uh, but if somebody asked me what the vision statement is, I would probably have started off with, you know, we really connect with our community, our neighborhoods. Uh, you know, our neighborhood associations with, you know, the sixteen, the, the process of T O T and what we do every year. And the council has final approval of all the projects, but you know, I think I would describe it as the business districts, the. The relationship between the community and, and how things work. And we may be clunky and it may take us longer. And we may have to be more patient, but you know what? We get it done and we've got a great city and. People respect the way Monterey does it. So I like them both.
Thoughts? It captures the essence of it, of what you're trying to accomplish, gives you some lift, direction, focus, but this is where you're going, this is how you get there. And then the, the value drivers are operationalizing the mission in pursuit of the vision. So again, it's an ensemble. Good. Good, good work. Good job, word smithing it. You can get really lost in that. So I thought you did well. So why don't we go ahead and take fifteen minutes, give me a chance to stretch your legs, decompress a little bit, make sure and save those documents. Value drivers, you had a brief discussion about that on, on the third, at our first session. The focus here is to review the value drivers and the proposed strategic objectives as offered to you by the city manager. We also want to have some discussion about some of those factors that are not in these strategic drivers. Which have to do with affordable housing, diversity, equity, inclusion and climate change. Those three areas were brought up at the last session, so we want to have some discussion about that. What's the appetite by the mayor and council to identify those as value drivers and then try to identify, specify some specific. Objectives, strategic objectives, I'm sorry for those. So first of all, though, we want to go through the value drivers. Find out what your thoughts are about those wrinkles, questions, are you supportive of those? Again, as I offered the last time, if you simply. Reaffirm those today, there's value in that in of itself because you reinforce it. Yes, Hans?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add for the, for the value drivers, the value drivers are basically. Equally critical for, for us to, to reaffirm, tinker with them, add new ones to it because. Or, or hundred thirty-two different priorities that, that we have presented to the council a couple of times now. They have to fall under those and then we can update you also how we are being. How we are progressing on those value drivers. So, so the, the value drivers should broadly capture the category. So somewhere that needs to be captured, housing, affordable housing, somewhere that needs to be captured. Fiscal stability, et cetera. So those things are helping us to, to then report back to you. Where are we making progress and in what, what, what kind of priority has the council given certain initiatives? So this is very important for us to give you then annually feedback where, where we are, where we are going. And I, I will ask the chief to confirm that.
So I, I just wanted to point out that this came up last time. Right now our value drivers, your value drivers are numbered. But I heard somebody say they're all equally important, so I would just suggest that maybe they're not numbered.
Makes sense.
Make it harder to orient yourself if they're not numbered when it comes to. Grabbing them to put them into a document to reference to them. No?
I wonder if we could have like a, a, a catchphrase at the beginning of each one, right? So affordable housing and then maybe there's a statement associated with it, but that way we could say the affordable housing driver as opposed to a number. To make it easier to reference. Yeah, I'm, I'm. Yeah, all I'm saying is like, maybe we use a, a, a short phrase that leads the statement. So it could be quality of life and then there's a statement associated with that. For that, for that value driver.
Yeah, well, that was, that would make sense. I'm just going through it and as an example, if you, if you had. A value driver, quality of life, highlighted, bolded. Semi-cone, working to improve our residents' quality of life. So, yeah, I think that there's some word smithing that could go on. But you could probably take each one of these, get rid of the number and then highlight what that main theme is for that value driver. Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, and I was just gonna point that out. That's something that staff, Nat and I could work on the, the cosmetics of how that looks and flows. We want to try to spend time with you this morning on the content, the substance of that.
So to me, I think all of these are still relevant. I don't know if staff has input, if there are some of these, they feel like we have. You know, accomplished or, and then could be removed, but I, I think they're all important and I, I would still like to see them all. One thing though. Under, what is it? The water, and I think I might have said this last time, I do think that should be maybe. Part of a bigger driver. I wouldn't get rid of it, but it isn't really a primary. It isn't something we are uniquely. Capable of delivering all by ourselves. And I think maybe a bigger category or driver would be something like. Ensuring a sustainable environment and then, you know, a water supply would be part of that. You know, sea level rise would be part of that. Sea level rise adaptation, a part of that and maybe other things, protecting our trees and forests. I, I don't know, but I think sustainable envi- and beautiful environment or something like that, I think is what. That should be and water should be part of that. And then on the last one. I'm not, I'm not gonna use the numbers, but maintain and expand an environment that solicits, welcomes and appreciates input for all. I think what, what we're trying to speak to there is transparency, collaboration and inclusiveness. And so I think I want to keep that, but I would, I would like to maybe reword it. It's a little confusing as it is and I think I, maybe something like. You know. Promote a community that is welcoming, inclusive, transparent and collaborative or something like that.
Uh, I, I would agree with number seven, I think, kind of rephrasing that to make it stand out as a more. Of an idea of transparency, I think would help kind of be clear about what the intent is there. And I, and I also agree around. Sorry, I'm, I'm using numbers, uh, around the water one. I don't think it necessarily needs to be its own driver. But if it falls in somewhere to, so that we can make sure that we continue to include that, I think would be good. Um, and then I would just want to reemphasize, I guess, my desire and I think the importance of us. Touching on those elements that Patrick had summarized from our last meeting. So affordable housing, diversity, equity, inclusion. And climate change, I think is a, are, are essential elements to the. Have. So I, I would, I would definitely say for the affordable housing and the climate change, I, I'm open to the idea that diversity, equity, inclusion piece falling in somewhere. Maybe under the transparency piece, but. I mean, there's an element associated with that, with how we treat our stat, like right, the policies that we come up with in regards to personnel. Internally, which transparency to me has a lot more to do with kind of. How we're working with the community, but there could be a way of trying to blend them together somehow.
Uh, just an observation, I think maybe Alan touched on this, looking at the last one. I'm confused as to why. That one really is talking about environment, but you, you know, it just, it seems like that needs to be expanded and it's. Not about environment, environment actually belongs in value driver four. We're talking about water, inadequate water supply, that seems to be an opportunity to expand and make that more really water, environment. And public health as it relates to sanctuary. Clean air, the environment and, and make everything water and environment in the same place. Adequate water supply for the city now and in the future is what the value driver is, but that needs to be expanded. Including the sanctuary and a forest, maintenance of forest and the environmental health issues that all cities have to. Struggle with, but I think that the last one being that if we look at the importance. Uh, why are we waiting till the last one to include partnerships, collaboration and transparency? It just seems like that ought to be. Um, one by itself that is really talking about the processes that we use, which is community partnerships. We ought to have a standalone value driver for that, that is really driving the processes that we use for, you know, the meets and collaborations. And the notices and the statutory requirements that we're, we follow with our process of governance. So that seems to be a one that should be on the front end rather than the end.
Yeah, I think that's always been, I'm, go down. Yes, I appreciate the fact that councils. The whole idea of climate change, as I mentioned at our last meeting, I think that's something very important. And water being part of that, as Alan's suggestion, makes a lot of sense to me. The idea of the transparency and the process. Council's come a long way, I would say in the last two to four years in that realm, and it's also a chance to celebrate. Have your say Monterey. That's coming up. One of them is parking programs where we're inviting the community. That didn't exist two years ago. Our daily COVID update, which is now just not a COVID update, but our daily update. That's become a wonderful resource that wasn't there before because of this value driver. And so I want to compliment the staff on that. Then you take a look at the whole climate warming, the city of Irvine. Has passed a resolution, one of three cities in the state, and it's an aspirational. Resolution for carbon neutrality by twenty thirty. I had an opportunity to meet with our staff in a local nonprofit. And we were talking a little bit about that and the whole idea, the city does have a climate action plan. It's pretty vibrant. We have the three Cs P, which didn't exist two years ago. And that of course is sustainable green energy. Then, and we just adopted our sea level rise study. And that didn't exist two years ago. Part of the L C P is a requirement of climate impacts. And of course, we could get into a huge discussion on climate warming and the United Nations Climate Change Report, which gave us ten years. To get our act together worldwide. And a lot of that's macro, so I think it's important to see what can we do as a city. Uh, we can, and we've made some progress on the electrification of our fleet. We took a small step towards the leaf blowers, electrical leaf blowers, but there's a lot of things that are going on that. Is it going to stop climate warming? No, but will it get us started? And remember when people had, you could smoke in restaurants and on planes? Then you had the smoking and non-smoking section as if it wasn't the same air. Remember that, right? And now it's, people would be appalled to walk into a restaurant and go on a plane and have smoking. And that all started on a very micro level. The city of Monterey was one of the first cities to ban smoking in restaurants. And we got a lot of flack on that and today. No one would think any differently. So the whole idea of climate warming, what are we doing and what can we do within our small town? All of us are very, using that word again, aspirational, we'd love to solve the world's problems and the national problems. We'll continue to work on those. But as a council, what can we do? To slow climate warming, to deal with climate change. So we had a lot of successes and then to me to have a value driver that. Puts all of our, our programs into one spot so it can see what we're doing and what we can do more in the future would be extremely valuable.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna go back to the affordable housing piece that Tyler brought up and to have that as a, a driver would be important. Only because affordable housing drives your diversity, equity and inclusion in your city. And so I could see that as, as a standalone. On top of that, you would need water projects to, to create those affordable housing. Not create, but to, so that's where you can put the water piece in. So I, I think I, I agree with, that, with. With Tyler, that that should be a, an outlining driver.
Just one quick comment, see if lightning can strike twice here. Uh, that's really through this process with our, with our drivers. You know, as you're looking through them holistically, we use the word environment many different ways and many different drivers. And I think that what makes, makes sense from my perspective is having an environment that is the actual sustainable environment as one driver. And in the last driver, driver seven, the environment in this driver is really talking about a public forum. And replace the word environment with forum, because that is something that's more timely in terms of we're trying to create a space where people can communicate. And they may be electronic, it may be have your say Monterey, maybe something else. But that speaks to the communication aspect, take environment out of that last one because it doesn't make sense there. It makes sense, but not in context with everything else.
Yep. So a couple of thoughts and, and. I asked Nat to share with me the vision and mission that we came up with just because I think it's helpful and important to make sure that we're capturing those elements that are associated there. And so I think we do a pretty good job of what's currently there and what we're potentially proposing here. The, the quality of life driver speaks to the public safety piece, though I, I wonder. And, and I don't, I'm just. Thinking and I don't know how much this fits here, but I wonder, because we do have to add in the health aspect somewhere unless I missed that. And so I wonder. I think that's, I think we can expand upon that, I guess, is maybe more of my point, so. Uh, so. And, and, and I wonder too, because the, the historic one is a little bit short and brief. I'm not sure if there's an, an intent or plan to. Kind of expand upon that, but I was just wondering that if that might be a space where we could go deeper with health and safety. With the historic and cultural piece of it, the environmental asset piece, I wonder if we can pull that out. And make it its own thing or add it to the water one as Ed suggested. Did in regards to climate change environment piece there, but the diversity, equity, inclusion isn't, is, is also in there. Under the, the sustaining, a high quality city workforce, the economic vitality is, is also there. And then under the last one, which I, I think it's important for maybe us to identify that maybe as transparency. But I, I can't remember who was saying this, somebody was saying something about process. And so I think that there is space for us to, and I don't know how deep we're going into the elements associated with the driver as opposed to kind of staying higher level. But I, I did just want to use this space to identify that I think there is. There is space for us to have better processes and how we administer meetings. And so one of the things that, that I think about mayor was, I can't remember her name off the top of my head, but. When we have. The public come in and speak, they, they do that, like if they're, God, and I'm forgetting my words here. When they appeal a decision that was made by, let's say, the planning commission and they come to the council. How much time are we dedicating to each of the? How much time are we dedicating to each of the speakers to present their case? It, and, and I'm only saying this because a community member pointed it out, it changed from one meeting to the next. And then she came to the second. Meeting, she goes, well, I planned for 10 minutes and now you're giving me 20 minutes. And so I think that there's space there to kind of have a procedure. Of like how we do that. So it's in there, there's no confusion around that. And then I also think that there's space for. Better processes with us as council members as electeds. And I think the whole conversation that I've been having with some of you around. City letterhead, right? Like, how does that work? What is the interaction that we have with staff around that? What is staff's role in, in relation to making sure that the formatting and who that, who that's getting. Submitted to is appropriate and in alignment with what our vision is. And then something that I've been working with staff on too, is trying to develop a new council member onboarding. Process, because I reflect on my experience of coming on board and it just kind of, I felt like it was. Difficult for me to get up to speed and, and get in here. And this isn't about me, it's about. The city and when new electeds come on board, I think it's important for us to kind of. Create a space where they can hit the ground running. And so where, where are we creating space for that? So anyways, I just kind of wanted to give some examples of. I think of how we can add to the, that last driver there. And I appreciate you supporting the idea of the affordable housing driver. And so anyways, final note is I think that touches on all the elements that we talked about in the vision and the mission process.
I've got a question for Patrick, because so I think in general, I support the idea of sort of elevating housing to its own. To its own driver, but I'm just wondering to Patrick also, because I don't want to have so many. Drivers that we end up getting distracted. So do you have some thoughts on kind of what is, what is sort of the. Range of number of drivers that you would recommend in your experience?
Yeah, most cities have anywhere from five to eight, maybe up to nine. And, and remember those strategic drive, the value drivers. In the strategic planning vernacular are referred to as key result areas. They don't change from year to year. What changes are the objectives? So. There's no perfect number, but I, I always try to encourage my clients keep it below 10, because then you're really starting to morph into. Things are standing alone, they may not, they may be temporary. And so then they kind of go away after a while, but I would say that. Something that you had said Tyler. You know, if you're thinking about removing water, then affordable housing could replace it. You ended up, you're going to still have seven. If you end up dropping that, but I'm, I'm going to give this to Hans, then I'm going to bring you all back and say. Let's talk about affordable housing, because we were kind of cobbling it. And then let's talk about diversity, equity, inclusion. Let's talk about climate change. There seems to be support that that's going to be a value driver. I don't think it's good use of your time for us to create the description of that in here. That can be done by, by staff and I can partner with Nat, we can take a stab at that at least. But what, what we want to try to accomplish by the end of today is what are some objectives that you want staff? Hans and his staff to, to put towards those, some of those are already underway. But if there's something that's not on here, remember the outcome of this whole process is to ensure there's alignment priorities between the governing body. And Hans and his staff, so there's a shared understanding about those. And we don't want people leave today and say, I didn't get a chance to talk about this objective. So this is a chance to talk about the objective. So let me give it to Hans.
Hans can answer the questions. As I go through this handout that's today, that's. The seven value drivers, there's a variety of the bullet points that are highlighted in bold. Some of these obviously were not value drivers. The last time any council took these on. I'll point to the first one, working to improve quality of life of our residents, very valuable. The first bullet point is. Ensuring the health and wellness of the community in response to COVID-19. So that was obviously added. You know, and they were, so the bullet points that are in bold. Highlighted in bold, those were added when? And that's the question. The other thing is, as we move forward and we leave a comment about COVID-19. Do we need to be thinking in terms of how we write this? That is not so specific as we have COVID-19 in the rearview mirror. And the next one is maybe COVID-22 or some other pandemic, but we should use generic terminology instead of specifics. That is talking about community health initiatives, that's health and wellness and not have something so specific. That places us in time.
And I just wanted to make one clarification on your point. I think you meant to say when COVID-19 is in the rearview mirror, right?
Yes, when I'm talking.
Wanted to make sure for the public or anybody that's listening.
Well, obviously we're all wearing a mask right now for a reason. So when we're, the next pandemic is maybe COVID-2022. So the language in this, I think, needs to be where we're not dating ourselves.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ed, for that question. So stated. To give you a direct answer, you take care of the value drivers, we take care of putting the strategic initiatives. Underneath those value drivers, but the bullet points that you see right now are a direct outflow. Of our council workshop that I believe we had in February, March, when we showed your comprehensive list. And we have tried to summarize those various work programs into. The proposed strategic initiative. So that, that is basically those bullet points we put together in March 2021. Based on our latest list that we discussed with you twice of council priorities and work programs. That we had. So the, the value drivers is, is what I think is, is the most important part right now. And then what the intent is, once we have established a, a common understanding of all those, we. Will bring this back to you, complete with the proposed strategic initiatives. And in a regular council meeting, and we are asking you then to adopt those as, as, as a guiding. Document for whatever the pleasure of the council is, and our intent is to update those on an annual basis. At which time also new strategic initiatives might be added. And as Councilmember Williamson expressed hope, we take COVID-19 off eventually. So, so that, that is the, the nexus of that. The reason though, why I raised my hand is I wanted to talk about water. Water is, is an absolute critical element. You can have affordable housing as your number one priority. But as we see right now with the city's RFPs for four properties. That we are wanting to, to dedicate to affordable housing, as we see also on Garden Road. Where we have project developers who want to build, you have nothing in water right now, nothing. So. Water is, is an absolutely critical element to allow you to be a council. Who can implement the, the value driver of, 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 of affordable housing. So it should be in the same breath with affordable housing, because. You are toothless without water. Water is, is in the beginning and in the end of everything we're doing, including economic vibrancy. And, and welcoming visitors, you know, so, so we, I just wanted to pitch, use this time to, to pitch again that this was. Put into the existing value drivers at a time when the water issue was, was percolating up, so to speak. Thank you. And, but the. And there were political intents at, at that time, but I think nothing really has changed yet. So, so I just want to pitch to, to have. To not drop water from, from the prominence of, of presenting it, combining it with affordable housing, it's all good. I just wanted to, to ensure that without water, you can have the greatest vision for affordable housing. Nothing will move. Here from the council.
Can I just comment on that? I, I agree with you and I'm probably the first one that would say that water should be a, a, a main driver. With, within all the cities of, of the peninsula. However, again, as I mentioned the last time, that is out of our control. Unless we all sit, all five of us sit on some water board that can make that decision and be the majority. So for me. Again, going back to the, the housing piece, to me, that the housing. Is what's going to drive even be, because as one council member said, that we can put policy in. Hoping that we get water and if we, and when we do get water, if we don't have the policy, and then we have to go back and put that policy back together. And so that's why I think the housing should be number one with. Something underneath saying that in order to accomplish this, we have to. Go out to our, our local communities or our boards and say that we need to, to drive the water projects.
So, I mean, I would be okay with saying affordable housing homelessness and water. I think. Homelessness should also really be with housing. I think they're related closely related. And I could, and I, and I agree, obviously you need water. I do agree with you, Dan, and that's kind of why I was okay with making it a more specific objective under the driver, because. Unless we're going to build a municipal water supply, which I've never heard anybody really suggest. I don't even know if legally we could, if we decided, you know what?
Let's build a water supply.
I mean, you know, I mean, are we going to build a D cell or are we gonna, you know, how realistic is stormwater runoff? Recapture and all of that. That's probably one thing we could do, but obviously we all know there are logistical. Challenges to that. So that's why to me, to make it a driver means that's something the whole city is really actively working on. And realistically, it's something we're working on, on the periphery, because we don't have a lot of control.
I, I, I like where Dan was going with it. With water as an element of the affordable housing, I think it's good to highlight. The housing piece as the driver and then these other elements kind of fall into it. And I think it works really well for the community, because I think a lot of the concern that community members have around water. Is right, like they don't want this, this overdevelopment particularly of hotels. Which we have established policies around that, but I think if we really make it an element of the need to create affordable housing, I think it really. Helps to create that vision around the direction that we're trying to go in. And then to Ed's point that he had made at the last session. Is just for us to be able to create this space for that conversation to happen around water. So how can? How can we take the leadership on the peninsula to help kind of move that discussion forward in a way? And maybe there are some of these things, right? Because there, there are policies that can be implemented, though maybe we don't have the authority over them, but. I'm thinking, you know, each of us, I mean, I just got an email from Marina Coast Water District and they're giving incentives for people to do water capture at their, on their properties. Why aren't we doing that? So I think that there's space for us to have these conversations. And I don't know what that format looks like, but I think we could take the leadership there.
How much time do I have? So my, yeah. But Patrick, I still have the microphone. So to be succinct, I don't repeat stuff from last session, but I think water. My perspective should be a value driver by itself. Water supply, water cleanliness, the clean water act that we have to adhere to. We have all kinds of statute that statutes that apply to us, because if we do anything wrong. We get in trouble, Steve knows this, city manager knows this. So I think that there's room for. The water alone to be a value driver and then expand how we operate with our internal processes. I think we do need to reasonably walk away from the political football of, you know, we've got 49% of the community wants. A D cell and 51% says no, and there's a battle and it's not going to be solved by the city of Monterey. But at the same time, I think because of value driver and saying that. A wa, a sustainable water supply for the city of Monterey is a reasonable statement of a value driver. How we get it is going to come from partnerships outside of the city with our neighbors and the state and the coastal commission and. Eventually there'll be a solution, but I think we should have, have a statement that says that water sustainable. For us is important and a separate value driver, that's the housing piece. I think they should be separate. For variety.
Would have been much less than 485, but because they spent $75,000 investing in the well. It adds to the, the price and that rules out a whole bunch of people that could have put it on hold. We have so few lots, they can't get hookups because we are in a cease and desist. So I think our. Position should be, let's do whatever we can't get off underneath the cease and desist. So that we can have a sustainable water partnership with the availability. Of water where it comes up for housing and for business. So it impacts housing so much, we need to acknowledge.
Yeah, they, they, I saw, saw a message that he said that they can see and hear now.
So that's all I wanted to say about that, the two separate value drivers and water drives every business decision. As you see a business that has no, no ability to expand or put people to work. Putting people to work means people can afford to live.
So I'd like to ask the staff, what would be, if, if that is a driver, and I just see one dot of one. Bullet says post strategic, what other items would we have as a proposed strategic? Just one, yeah, if it was just water and it's that important as a driver. What, what, what are we going to do besides just that one point?
Clementine, can you make me a panelist on the conference center line, please?
Yeah, I've been trying that, but it gives an error message.
Clementine, can you tell me again?
Yeah, when I tried to, there's an error message. I was wondering if you can log in as city clerk.
I'll try logging in as city clerk. I'll try logging in as city clerk.
I looked up the error net and it also says that it's when someone who's an alternative host logs in with the wrong link. So do you want me to resend the alternative host link? I think I could do that.
Test, testing one, two, three. Can folks on Zoom hear us?
Yes, it sounds good.
Sounds good. Okay, great. All right, uh, we'll start again shortly. Please hang on tight. Thank you.
Part of your role is not simply just to have a list of projects. Part of your role is also to be an advocate or be attentive to certain issues where you have inputs. Because if you look at the list of items on the current strategic value drivers, you don't have control over some of those, you know, literally either. However, they've risen enough to level them on there, which are going to affect them in some way, shape or form. I wouldn't worry so much about if you only have two or three or even one bullet point under a certain particular value driver. So I, and I would also say I wouldn't weigh that the value drivers that have more bullet points are more important. Sometimes they just want themselves more. I'm just sharing that with you. These get lost in numbers.
That's not, that was my point. My point was that.
Um, I'm wondering if our driver should have actions after each one of the drivers for the staff to be able to implement the driver itself. That's, that's all I was saying. I wasn't trying to say that just because this one has more bullets means that.
Well, no, yeah, I, I was just making that.
Right.
So one of the comments I wanted to make in staff's perspective would help us out is not to combine different thoughts within the same driver. So for example, item number two that we have talks about economic fatality and. Infrastructure. Now, the infrastructure issue with water that we have as its own driver is fantastic, but. From being in the different communities, which had different kinds of emergencies, we had a sewer moratorium, whether it's a water. Moratorium, we could be facing a traffic moratorium if we have too much traffic that we can't circulate. So the suggestion would be. They have an infrastructure driver that says satisfactory infrastructure includes water, sewer, transportation. And that would cover that aspect of it, which would allow then the affordable housing. And then these things come together in a complementary as opposed to lighted by the digital. So that's just my two cents.
That's a very good suggestion, Steve. We like that. Did you get a, did you get a thumbs up from the chief on that one?
You said water sewer transportation, yeah.
Makes sense.
Infrastructure um would include water, it would include all those other kinds of utilities, but it could also include. And transportation, but it could also include city buildings. It could also include our streets. It could also. So include bike paths and mobility, multi-modal mobility. It could also include housing. It could also, to me, infrastructure is all of the physical things and all of the physical systems that we need. To make our city run in a way that provides that quality of life we all expect. Um, so I like that. And I think we also have a need to highlight our in city infrastructure. And it is in here kind of under quality of, I think might be quality of light. I don't know. Every quality of life is kind of a catch off. Or it seems like things that maybe don't fit elsewhere. But I, I think we're going to need to highlight infrastructure going forward. Both implementing what we've already got going on, but also augmenting and, and, and improving and restoring.
Yeah, that's. I'm, I'm not sure if we clarified um having. Something more prominent in regards to environment and climate change, but I think that might be a good space to incorporate that just because if we're. Thinking about infrastructure. Particularly along the coastline, how are we um being inclusive of, of the effects of, of climate change? So I, I appreciate it. I just wanted, wanted to throw that out. And then in what's currently driver number six, the last piece there says. Environmental assets. So I'm not sure if that's appropriate to stay there or if it goes under this um one that Steve is proposing.
You know, it's, it's, i- if we were to Smith all of these seven or we created eight or nine, I mean, we could categorize. These, is this something that we're going to? Meet again to do, or are we going to staff this?
Stop it.
Okay. And I'm, I'm good with that because I think that right now the value and benefit of this is that staff is hearing our comments and they, they get to, you know, incorporate some of this. But I think that it's important to categorize things and not start to lose. Sight of the priorities. As an example, I think it's appropriate. And Steve was talking about infrastructure. I think infrastructure takes on a whole meaning of itself, but I wouldn't want to see. You know, water just be listed as one of the many infrastructure things. It can be duly stated, but I think water and housing. Uh, need to be standalone value drivers. Now, I would say on water. By stating it as a value driver, I think it has value. For our attempts to advocate for lobby, to influence others in Sacramento. Uh, in other parts of California that impacts decisions on water, there may be grants. There may be other opportunities, but I just think I don't want to bury. The need for a sustainable water for the city, uh, because this is the lifeblood. It needs to be a high priority. Uh, how we get there is the debate. But we're stating it for the city of Monterey, but sustainable water is a number one priority for Pacific. River Grove and Seaside and Carmel and the Unicorberry areas. Um, in Delray Oaks and all, all of our neighbors. So it just to me. Uh, makes sense, sense for it to be a standalone uh value driver and the advocacy comes later. Because it's built to um housing, I think it needs to be by itself. But the infrastructure piece makes sense. Because there's also the water piece that is the clean water portion of it, the runoff, the sewage, the. Uh, the runoff from the hill into the ocean, the sanctuary, the, the clean beaches. You know, so we only are in charge of the city of Monterey, but we do get to advocate for positions. That's for sure.
To, to help the staff out a, a little bit in these drivers, I, I understand that we shouldn't be prioritizing these drivers. But how does the staff know which ones to work on first, second, third, and fourth without prioritizing? What we think is more important? Because as a former staff member, that always drove me kind of crazy when some, some. A board would tell you this is what you would like, this is what we like, but with no priority.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's the key question that no staff in the world has ever answered working with the council. Because uh you, a- and we jokingly said the council has thirty two number one projects, you know? Um, we are, we have to be adaptive, uh, council member Albert, because I, I unders- we, we have to go. Uh, multitasking on all the fronts. But you are dictating to us, uh, uh, or you are recommending dictating reacting. To the community needs and based on that, we are prioritizing certain topics. There will be always elements that will be continuously pushed forward. There will be elements where we say, uh, if, if we want to push on this right now, based on the capacity and planning, this topic will stand behind a little bit. It's, it's hard to, to, um, I think it's hard for the council and for the staff to create a system. That inherently contains the discipline to, to just look then. On, on the multitude of the, of the, of the selected topics and ignoring others that percolate up. So it, it will be a balanced system, but what this will allow us to do is again. We can, we are pushing the ball forward on many of those topics and you will know where we are. And sometimes certain things are a high priority for the council and we will push that forward and you will notice that as well. But other items are continuously worked on and we can update on that. So it's. Um, I think it, the, the system is not perfect as I envision it. But it gives the council the greatest flexibility of, of uh. Reacting to community needs without losing the, the oversight over the overall objective and the vision and mission and the strategic. Value drivers. So that's, that's what I, how I would answer that.
So just to add on to that, it's not, i- if you don't prioritize your drivers, it's not fair to the staff to try to read our minds where. Those priorities are. And if you're being evaluated on your performance of these drivers. If you don't know which ones are a priority, you may, you're at a hit and miss whether you're getting it or not.
When you talk about priorities, Dan, that's really such a good point. You know, we've talked about Covey's. Quadrants, which Ed, you work with a lot in your business. And there's a tendency that everything's in the first quadrant, important and urgent. And all of us who've been in a bureaucracy, worked for a government, know that's true, schools especially. Because if you really got down to it, take a look, speaking of infrastructure again. And the Biden proposal on uh soft and hard infrastructure. What's driving it right now is probably the number one priority, funding. And everything that we talk about, without funding, none of it happens. So when it gets really down to it, we just balanced our budget with six point five million dollars from the federal government, which we will not get next year. And so the whole idea of how you prioritize, prioritize something is an, an interesting workshop discussion. Perhaps for another day. I know my daughter and son-in-law both who are teaching. Everything's urgent and important for educators. I don't know if that's true at MPC or not, but. Uh, we always have that sense and, and it's our good friend Fred Nier always said, we're all high achievers and want to make everything important. And urgent, but we simply can't. So Dan's point is well made. If you're evaluating a city manager or staff. Have to put it in context. But a lot of it gets right back, I hate to say it, gets down to dollars and cents sometimes. We don't have the money, we're not going to be uh. Doing anything for sea level rise. We're not going to be able to donate city land for affordable housing. Not going to be safe. We're not going to be safe. We have to be solvent. So one can make a case that maybe is our number one priority. It's certainly true nationally. And I'm not saying that's is our number one priority, but it's kind of puts in a perspective for me.
Yeah, I just want to concur with uh what the mayor said because if, if the money is not there, then these are lists that contain. Uh, wants, wishes, dreams, uh, but in reality, staff's going to have to. Get down into setting the priorities for us and remind us that there isn't enough money. To do everything that we've listed in terms of, you know, uh, our value drivers and the bullet points and the hundred and thirty five or hundred and forty as it grows. Uh, but the, the nice thing is, is when you can check stuff off, off of that task list and it becomes. Uh, you know, more manageable and we start to see it go from one forty down to, you know, ninety or eighty or seventy or, or better success, but. I think overall, we're, we're tasked with fulfillment. In this magical partnership that we have with the community. And so. I- if it boils down to the seven and the eight, and these are our value drivers, the bullet points matter a lot, but those bullet points move around. On from year to year, as we know. But I just wanted to add on that, um, I concur with everything you said. It does come down to money and every year when we do our budget and we get back to the. Um, every two years we do our budget, uh, we're setting the priorities. Um, I think the council. Um, says things, speaks, and you know that the staff is listening. The city manager listens, the city manager goes back and he probably looks at the tape the very, very next morning because he's so anxious to see what the council said. Um, just so.
Maybe that night?
Yeah, maybe that night. Um, but, and I'm sure it could be texts back and forth. What did, what did they say? What did he say? What did we just vote on? So. Uh, the council, you know, does set the policy and the direction and we lead. And our staff is fantastic at it and the city manager's tasked with. Yeah, if I have to stand back and say, he's evaluated on all of it. He really is. Every, every single bit of this, he's evaluated on it. And so back to the Covey illustration that works so well. Quadrants one, two, three, and four, we want to live in two because that's where you have time to advance. And do the tasks you need to do because you're thinking ahead. So I think that's the biggest thing is. We should be reminded by the staff and the city manager to constantly think about. The future ahead ahead. We shouldn't be in tasks. They are there. We should be in policy. And thinking in terms of long term. So that's that's the key in the in the messages to think in terms of long term. Uh, but we've got a great city manager and great staff to be able to help us do that, but.
So for me, and I I said this before, but I think I'll say it again, and you kind of touched on that, Ed. The drivers and the objectives are how I evaluate Hans and how I expect the community to evaluate me and us collectively. And so that's why I really think it's important that they speak to kind of um. Objectives that are high priority and that can be accomplished. And money also is a factor. You have to pay for things. Not most of these things are going to require money. So I guess I would just say for me, housing is still a number one priority. I think it relates to so many things. It relates to um, sustainability and the environment. It relates to quality of life. It relates to having a workforce that can live here, afford to live here. Um, homelessness. Interestingly, in the recall, if you you the the polls that I saw anyway, two of the major issues that people had that were, you know. Participating in the recall were housing, affordable housing, this is across California, lack of affordable housing and homelessness. And we've heard those concerns here. So I really think those. We're going to continue to have, we've got projects moving forward to address homelessness and I want to make sure that. That that's a priority so that I get that we continue to fund and support those those regional efforts. Infrastructure, when I think of, you know, we're going to have to do something to fund. A major city infrastructure plan. We've got buildings, public safety buildings, the library, the sports center, the youth. Center, they all need attention and that's going to cost money and take a lot of staff effort and a lot of working with the community. And I think. That needs to be a priority really for the neck over the next couple of years. Sustainable environment under which I I I kind of shy a little, I mean, the the word climate change, I think I don't. And it's kind of my problem with water as a as a main driver. I just, uh, I prefer to have things that are. Actionable and not political. So I like the idea more of a sustainable environment and. And I can see things like the idea Clyde mentioned of being a carbon neutral city by by twenty thirty in terms of our buildings and our. Uh, transportation, equipment and 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 maybe other practices. There's all kinds of things that could fit under that that I think would be. Actionable. So those those for me are kind of my priorities, housing homelessness. Our city infrastructure and environmental sustainability, given that we have limited resources and limited staff time.
So I I wanted to dive dive in a little bit deeper um. On the on the housing piece and and I wonder what your thoughts are, Patrick, in regards to what you feel like might be appropriate for this because it is a new thing that we're. Addressing and it seems like we're moving in that direction. Uh, but one thing that I I would point out is that I feel like there's a lot of work in this space. That's tangible and and then you and I were talking about this a little bit during the break, but I feel like there's a lot of policy, a lot of policies that um. That we've discussed that we haven't fully come back to yet. So I I think if we can bring some level of prioritization to those things like. The discussion of the ADU policy, um, like allowing um, residential on the first floor in mixed use spaces. I mean, these are things that we've already. We've already initiated, but we haven't followed through on, um, and those are real tangible things that um, we're already in the process of. So. Kind of allowing those to finish and bringing prioritization and focus to things like our um, opportunity sites that. We've identified, obviously, water is is a big piece of that, but what are we doing to line up everything else? So that way, if. From when the water becomes available, we're ready to move forward and hit go there. And I see um, Kim has her hand up too, but.
Okay, just one second. I just wanted to add two thoughts and we'll get to to has her hand up. Uh, so my role is. I'm a flashlight and a mirror, right? That's my role. Um, so let me offer a couple of thoughts. There are some things under strategic initiatives that are really core services. That I'm not sure they make the cut and not, it's not because they're not important, but I think you could winnow your list down simply by identifying those things that you're going to do. Staff's going to do those regardless whether in some respects, whether council puts it on the list or not, because those are your core services. So in some respects. You have volume here where maybe you don't necessarily need to. And I'm not going to go down that list right here, but I would I would offer that. To take another bite of the apple of this at some point in the future, say it's next year or something, I would say that would be some good pre-work to do is to make some. Removal and put those in core services because truly for this to be a strategic plan, these should be initiatives that otherwise wouldn't get done as part of the core services. The second thing is, uh, for the last time and this time and you're very, um, you're, it's very common in these sessions, we don't really talk about what the city's not going to do. And so everything seems to be making the cut and you do have capacity issues. You have, as you've said, it's easy to identify funding. But I would offer to you, money is not the city's most precious resource. Time is. On what do you want staff to spend their time? And I'm just offering that up and it's good to have a discussion about things. It's also good to be able to say, we understand that it's compelling. At the same time, we're not going to be able to direct staff resources to that because if we're going to and you have limits on your staffing levels as it is. We're not going to do that right now. I think that, and I know those are not easy decisions to make and I'm not saying that they are. But that's where communities that really are more intentional and deliberate achieve success. They're successful by choice, not by chance. They decide what they're not going to do. Maybe somebody else is in the in the driver's seat and they're not. I'm just offering that to you. Um, these, it's easy to kind of just continually expand and uh. That's also a frustrating part, I think, on staff to say, how are we going to get all this done? Because you have to resource it some way, shape or form. They do depend on the five of you to decide what it is that you say, that's a good idea. However, at this point in time, we're not going to move forward. For whatever reason, I'm just offering that to you, that I think that's, and I know it's not easy, but just trying to flush that out. Because we really haven't talked about what you're not going to do. Yeah. And I know that's not, again, that's not easy to do. So, uh, but two parts. One. I think this list could be winnowed down by transferring it some of just core services and then it would seem less imposing to all of you. And two, I think it'd be worthwhile, not necessarily today, but at some point to really. For each of you to reflect on, what is the city? Well, it's a good idea and it's fun to tell residents, we're not going to do something. You do have. You can do just about anything. It's hard to do everything. And it's not because the merit is not there, it's because of just the limits on time, money, effort and capability. So, uh, somebody had their hand up, I think, Kim.
Kim did, she take it down.
She's muted. There you go. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Just a brief comment. I do think the water and housing situation is a very unique um, barrier in comparison to other. Items. I mean, the city of Monterey was only able to achieve the construction of eleven housing units last year. And those were all accessory dwelling units and that's because we don't have a water supply. Um, so. I I like the idea is how you framed it, the things we can get in line for when water is available. But I think the key goal is to produce housing and I think we need to realize we can't do that until we solve our our water situation.
So I I just wanted to bring up that when you you, when you're talking about core services, what I have found sometimes is that obviously I I need to update technology and other things like that. Additionally, uh, we saw last year or the year before where where there were discussions about potentially defunding. Public safety. And with that, if I don't have things that are called out here because we really are a core service, sometimes it seems to me that. That aspect is lost because it's not listed here. And so to Dan's point, I very much appreciate because. Dan was a staff member that he understands it. When we prioritize things, it seems like those core service things aren't talked about as much because they are considered core service. And so then are they prioritized or when I'm writing agenda reports or presenting before council, I need to say and point out. The council has made this a priority. So I would just submit that. Some of those core service things, if they're not listed, it it creates some. Some hardship for us to show that council has said that that is a priority and that's kind of why. If we don't, because there are so many priorities, if we prioritize things over others. Then sometimes those others, it it's hard to show why that's a priority.
Remember, this is a there's a strategic plan, there's an operational plan.
I would just offer the budget is primarily your operational plan. It's the allocation of financial resources, the deployment of that. I'm trying to just help you continually stay focused on what's the strategic initiatives you want to support. The budget is a different device altogether. Do they intersect? Some cities try to use the strategic plan to drive the budget. That that takes a lot of iteration, takes a lot of involvement and it's not easily just like you're baking it. I mean, it takes some level of discretion and. Creating some symmetry between those. This is what you're trying to adopt here, strategic initiatives. I would offer to you, they should. Definitely to the chief's point, should support it, but it shouldn't be replicating the budget, what you have in there. Because the budget is more about operations, um, services, very critical, the backbone to the community, absolutely. We're trying to help you stay focused on the strategic initiatives more at a policy level, not so much, not so much at the operational level, just offering that as a point of view. And then I want to get to Tyler's point too about the housing because we you want to spend some time on that.
I just want to respond to uh, the chief's comment and I concur and I just wanted to look at value driver currently three. And maybe it's just a wordsmith thing, uh, but I think there's room there that includes more robust language. Currently, it says providing sufficient resources and support to develop and retain a high quality city workforce. Totally concur. I think it should be more robust language. And if it goes back to our mission statement where we talk about. Safe, healthy, sustainable. I thi- I think it should be tying some of those elements to that. I know, you know, we don't want to repeat here and there. But I think we should go back to um, a place where we're talking about resources in 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 a human human asset. If time is the greatest resource we have, I think we should acknowledge that and point back to the the mission. Statement, we're saying we want a clean and safe and sustainable community and it takes a workforce to be able to do that. So. So I think there's an opportunity to wordsmith that that portion of it.
So, oh. So I I jumping back to the housing piece and I'm not sure if this will allow us to kind of continue this conversation, but I did just want to respond to Kim. I completely agree in regards to the the goal being to create. The housing and actually having that, right? Like that's 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 one hundred percent spot on and I'm glad that you brought that to the forefront. Um, I guess the question is, how do we do that if water continues to be a barrier and and we're restricted. As a council and a city in regards to our role there, there might be some role that we play. But at the end of the day, there are agencies that are 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 mainly responsible. I kind of heard some side conversation, like maybe we. Kind of propose a water supply project, but I'm not sure how far out of the realm of of reality that is. And so I think, yes, with the goal of creating as much housing as possible, let's have this conversation with. Water and do what we can, but but also that I think that does create space for us to say. Let's make sure that when the water barrier is re- if and when that is removed, that. We have everything ready to go. So it's just, it's just a go forward. And of course, there are elements that we can't do without having the water, right? That there's not a clear vision of how that might work. Um, but let's do what we can. I guess is kind of the point that I was trying to make. And I'm I'm interested in any more thoughts that you have, Kim, because you're super intelligent on this area.
She agrees with me.
So, um, Matt, could you put up our mission statement, our newly revised mission statement? Okay, so while he's doing that, I just think, uh, again, the driver should flow out of. And be in harmony with the mission statement. So I think it might be just a good reminder for us to take a look at that. And ask yourself if it does. And I'm I'm thinking about what the chief said. And I'm just wondering if, you know, maybe a different way of looking at it, maybe we should have a driver that speaks directly to safety, public safety, which could include lots of different things. Maybe we should have a driver that speaks directly to a healthy community. Maybe we should have a driver that speaks to preserving and promoting our our history and culture. Maybe we should, we do have one that speaks to economic vibrancy and we've kind of been talking about one that addresses the environment and I think we should. I think that would be a way to approach it and I think in addition to that, I would add housing. And I I I hear that in some ways, it seems like there's a debate. Should it be water? Should it be housing? And I think we all know they're linked. My my concern is. Water, at least in this in this current context, it it really means delving into a political issue rather than a city. Objective or something that a city can accomplish unless we really want to do that, which I would, I I've been for years, I've been saying, yeah, let's uh, let's explore. Our water runoff and whether that can be recaptured. And so if we want to go that direction where we're actually as a city going to be. Providing a part of the water supply and that's going to be a directive that we give to the public works department and we fund. It and we say that's a priority. I'm okay with that. But if what we're really saying is we're going to do public political. Activism or political, make political statements or we want our staff to make political statements and then we kind of. Use water as an excuse for not delivering housing. I'm not okay with that and I don't think, I don't think it's. Going to build consensus or help us accomplish our goals.
And I think a good example of the water piece is, I mean, PG is has done it, um, right? So I think there there is space for us to do it. I think we actually have more opportunity. On the piece about water. Um, I I still do see it as an element of the housing piece and and I think just following up a little bit on. The point that um, that Kim was making, right? If the idea is. If the end state for the housing piece is to create additional units and where we've seen ourselves any what successful in regards to. Um, adding units within the city of Monterey, I think it was eleven from last year here, um, was from ADUs. Well, then why aren't we addressing the ADU policy to find ways of maybe allowing that to be a little bit easier for our residents to move forward and that's. I mean, if that's, that's the state, right? And and water is a barrier to everything else that we do. Let's focus on the ADU thing and figure out ways that we can make that a little bit easier for our residents. Trying to focus on the affordable housing piece.
That's in fact, the planning commission, Kim's still with us, is currently reviewing.
Like your mic.
The the planning commission is currently reviewing ADU policies.
There's been a gap in, I think, the last time they reviewed it.
Yes, well, that's one of the reasons is because the state law changes.
That was when it came to us.
Okay, just they just had a hearing. They just had a hearing and they're forwarding a recommendation from their last council meeting. Yeah, it was just a planning commission and it's coming, coming back to us.
No, I I understand. I think.
I I think the the point that I'm making is. I guess I would ask the question, is it, i- am I wrong to think that we could have found a space to. Have the allow this conversation to move a little bit more efficiently through the process. Am I wrong in thinking that that was a a a reality? Because I think other things have taken priority and. I think that that's kind of where this maybe conversation comes at a later date, which is how do we identify the priority for for the staff? I mean, the moment that Alan had proposed the idea of cannabis, that kind of went way up here on the on the priority list and everything was about moving cannabis forward. But we talked about ADUs before that and now it just doesn't seem that. Because it's not bringing revenue to the city, it doesn't get that same level of priority. Well, housing is important for our residents. Um, especially the most vulnerable people. And so how are we making sure that that's, and we're maintaining that as a as a level of priority? Just throwing that out there.
Well, I I would just respond back to the uh, the process, you know, sometimes it does take time, but we are going to hear the ADU recommendation again relatively soon. They just went through the planning process. Uh, and the state law does change frequently. The next thing that just changed is the governor just signed SB nine. Which is going to be a direct attack on our our ones. So we have a lot of work ahead of us to hear and understand. Some of the legislation that's just been passed. On the housing piece, um, that back to the water, I I think, um, Alan, I want to say that, yes, I agree. That we don't want to put value drivers that put us in a political realm, but I. Think we all can acknowledge that whatever the sustainable water supply is going to be. we already advocate through a representative that serves on the sewer authority that is doing M one, where they are going to be sanitizing the sewage water to put that into part of the solution, which does directly drive up rates to our community. So we participate in that through the representation with M one. I'm not advocating that we take a a statement that we build our own decal plant. I would always advocate ways where we can capture and and store and and replenish the aquifer if we have opportunities to do that. I don't think we've ever said no to that. But at some point, I have to say, if five of us all collectively supported a regional water solution and we advocated to the coastal commission, the CUPC and the water resources, the world would pay attention to the city of Monterey. But we currently don't do that for political reasons. Individually, we have the right to do that. And I've been to the CUPC and to the coastal commission and wrote a letter to the coastal commission. I'm sorry, to the CUPC and the regional water or state water resources and wrote a letter to the coastal commission. So we have our advocacy that can work any way we choose it to be. But collectively, we have never asked for and pleaded for approval of a regional water project. Politics got in the way. Well, it's, it's impossible to solve it unless you're willing to take the risk for the purpose of the greater good of the city of Monterey to get a water regional project forward. I'm not saying that that's what we put in print, but what I'm saying is that we should have a value driver that acknowledges the necessity of a water supply for our future.
Could I, could I ask a follow up to to your statement? Is is the point that you were making about the five of us collectively trying to come up with something about something specific to the city of Monterey? Or taking the leadership in regards to proposing something for the region?
Well, my perspective would be that we all in unison agree on the viability of projects that solve the water solution. And the solution is get out from underneath the cease and desist. Obviously, we don't, we know that.
I, I think the concern that I have if we talk about for the larger region is that there, it could be painted from like, well, who cares what Monterey thinks, right? And and I think about something that Alan has talked to me about offline. So hopefully it's not anything too personal, but right? There was this idea that I worked with some members in the community of kind of coming up with something and then proposing that to the council. And Alan's feedback to me was, well, it might be good to like loop in the council on this and have the council be the one that comes up with this. Because if you come up with something and then bring it to the council, the council is going to have this feeling like they didn't have any ownership over it. And and so I, my fear is, is that if we try to do something around regional water that the Water Management District or Monterey One Water kind of might get this feeling like, okay, thanks Monterey, appreciate it. But we, you know, this is our realm kind of thing. So I guess I'm just cautious about how we approach that. If it was something specific about city Monterey is going to spring, you know, find out their own solution and we're going to push forward a project for the city of Monterey. I think there's space for that, for us to have that conversation and look at the viability of that solution. And and if I could just jump back to the to the housing piece real quick, it is have some small bullets that I feel like are really clear substantial things to give weight to the idea of housing, affordable housing being its own driver. So there was this idea of kind of working through the MBEP recommendations, right? There's these small policy changes that individually won't make a difference, but collectively, if we kind of found a way of looking at these things, they could really make it easier for developers to come in and do their job, right? So I think collectively, they did something to the tune of reducing the cost of of development by several percentage points. I can't, I don't want to say a number because I think each of them, there was like nine recommendations and each of them I think provides one to two percent savings. So if we kind of can look through those and and work through those, some of them, we've already again have directed staff to do some work too. And we're waiting for those to come back, like allowing units on the first floor and mixed use spaces. So I think MBEP recommendations or or similar, maybe not just from MBEP, but looking at those recommendations that exist out there and allowing ourselves to kind of update some of our policies. And this is something that we can do without the need of having a conversation about water. The housing opportunities, I think we're off to a great start in regards to looking at the opportunity sites. But I would also offer this as a space to say that we shouldn't be limiting ourselves to thinking about housing development on these opportunity sites or elsewhere as limited to private development. I think we also should keep an open mind and recognize that there is a space for public opportunity as well. And then ADUs, I think is is another fine point where we can make sure that we're providing some prioritization under this driver. And then the study session this month, not this coming up Wednesday, but following Wednesday, we're going to be focused on tenant protections. And so what does that look like, given the fact that 64% of our residents are renters? How how do we prioritize whatever may come out of that discussion? So there's a lot here is what I'm, is the point that I'm trying to make in regards to this driver.
So I just wanted to respond.
Hold on, yeah, one second. So water, obviously, we know water is a political thing throughout the cities. For us, I think what Ed is trying to to say is that when there is a water project or water decision at the three levels of either water management, CalAM or Water One, that the city write a letter to each one of those individual organizations, say, we support this, please vote for this. So whatever it is, for instance, if it's the expansion of the recycling plant and you need a an agreement with CalAM, we tell them we are in support of that, of that agreement. I think that's, that's the position the city of Monterey is is, I'm not saying that's position we should take because I know the five of us all don't agree with that. So that's the hard part about water politics and and the and the council to agree to anything when it comes to water. That's very difficult. But again, without any water projects, we still, as Kim mentioned, we still can't get any affordable housing until we make a decision on where we stand on what those water projects are.
Yeah. We got about 30 minutes left. I just want to see if there's an area particular, because we're not going to solve the water issue today. We know that, right? I'm trying to, I want to redirect council if I can. What what area, honestly, you think would be really fruitful for mayor council to discuss their time we have remaining? Again, I'm not, this mayor, this water issue will continue. I get that. We've got affordable house, we've talked a little bit about climate change.
Yeah, get the mic. Yeah, there you go, Patrick.
Just curious to know, maybe from your vantage point, where their time would be well invested for the time we have remaining?
Thank you. So so I I think there will be a large homework assignment for staff at the end of this morning session. What would I envision? I I think those conversations that we have right now, they're very, very intense and deep. And I I appreciate, we talk about water, we talk about affordable housing. And I take away the task, figure it out, Hans, how I bring back, how we bring back to you the 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 value driver that that puts affordable housing on the top, that that acknowledges the discussion about water that we had. I I hear counsel loud and clear about what you say about water. I I I disagree with councilman Bahafa to to basically inflate the number of value drivers to be reflective of of certain elements. And by that, I don't mean I I still would like to keep it to seven to eight or so, because that's very manageable, also from a cognitive psychology point of view, these are things you can handle in your head. Anything greater than seven, you really lose track of number eight and nine and 10. So so I I really like that to to restrict it to that. So I don't want to give police their own bullet, to be frank with you, their own value driver. But it has to be mentioned somewhere prominently. So chief, so no disrespect there. But then when 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 you spoke about this council member Alan, I I can already hear the library director telling me, oh, I want my own value driver as well, and so want others. So so Patrick, to go back, I I like the flow of thoughts right now as the council is doing it. I I know that there will be a task for us to bring this back to the city council and and try to translate that into palatable value drivers. And underneath, we will put the strategic initiatives. But I I I would not, I do not have an item where I say, let's talk about climate change or so. We can talk about climate change, absolutely. But I think the flow right now is is very, very productive for for all of us.
Thank you. Take 30 seconds. Acknowledge Tyler and Dan's comment. Dan, you you said it exactly what my thinking is. And sometimes I'm not as precise as I should be, but I think on the water and the housing, if we look at how do we get things done in the city of Monterey, the majority of the stuff that we do, that's the big stuff, the big lift is we do a lot of it in partnerships with our neighbors. We have regional partnerships. Sanitation is regional, water is regional. Wait, waste is regional, the homeless efforts are regional. Law enforcement as a department, yes, it's our department, but they work regional. Fire is regional. So I would just offer that in the context of water, if we keep it in mind of regional efforts, avoid the political, you know, bullet points and statements where we're not advocating for a project over another project. But we have to think in terms of the only way that water will be solved is regionally. Because we are a regional water district, not the city of Monterey district, and I acknowledge that. But we can't continue with the fight because it is handicapping us to achieve housing. And I serve on AMBAG and represent you all in AMBAG. We're going through the processes, Kim knows, is the planning representative. The Rena numbers that are going to impact us are going to blow your mind in terms of the regional need. We can't even get more than 11 done in the city of Monterey. Well, how about when the new demand numbers are going to be coming in at like 2000 or 3000? Now, there's no penalty from the state of California, thank goodness. Yeah. But there may be eventually. And if we don't have a regional process to achieve water, to bring affordable housing, what are we doing in the city of Monterey? What is government about if we can't speak to the immediate demand and necessity of water? So I would just advocate to think in terms of this as partnership, regional, look for ways to advocate. And we are not the only city that's doing this in the state of California. So we need help from state and federal to solve it, but think regional and look for opportunities to open up and solve some of those political gaps.
I think if I could expand on a point that I was making earlier in regards to the water, I gave the example of PG and and how we could follow suit and and create some additional water supply for ourselves. I think we have more opportunity than PG does. I mean, we live on the coast, there's, there's a lot, a huge slope here where it drives down in one direction. We have Lake El Estero, we have Lake Del Monte at MPS, and we have Roberts Lake. And as I know, I think just regionally though, I, so we have, and and if I understand correctly, what we do is before the storm surge comes, right? So I think part of the problem with the water is we get it at, we might get a lot at one point in the year, but we don't have a lot of place to put that water once we have it. And this is the sense that that we've had conversations with with the general managers from the Water Management District and and Monterey One Water. And so can we use space in Fort Ord to help store some more water while we're waiting for pure water Monterey to get around to pumping that water and purifying it? But I'm, my my point is, is that I think that we have an opportunity. So maybe if this is so important, maybe we bring focus around the idea of us just taking leadership around a project within the city of Monterey. Paul Paul Shudo, the general manager of Monterey One Water, they tested it out. They took the a pump and they went from where the manhole is that we release the water into the bay from Lake El Estero and then put it in the manhole for 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 the pure water Monterey project. I mean, they're they're so close to, he said something, they're like within 20 feet of each other. So if we can focus on supporting the infrastructure to connect that as opposed to letting that water off into the bay, why don't we pump it somewhere? The storage is going to be another side of that project. But maybe that's where we focus our energy. Maybe we focus our energy on developing some leadership and developing solutions for the city of Monterey.
Yeah, no, no dispute at all. And I think those are the kind of things that go into a statement of value driving that makes water so important. So any any opportunities for solving this, the the big problems incrementally in different stages, support it 100%. So I I think we're in total agreement, looking for opportunities for future solutions.
I I just, I would say in terms of a political statement, I I'm certainly in support of us making a united statement in support of Monterey One Expansion. I'd be totally down with that and very supportive of that. I don't know if that's, if we have support for for that, but I'd be okay with that. I'm not yet this time prepared to support a decal, maybe in the future, but not right now. I 100% agree with what Tyler just said. And it's something I think I've been talking about for almost 10 years. It's just always seemed to me totally crazy that we let so much water run out to sea. There's logistical issues, it'll cost money, but any of these projects costs money. You know, is it possible to to, and again, I know there's the coastal commission, I know there's issues, but is it possible to make Lake El Estero deeper? So it could handle, could store more water, Roberts Lake deeper to store more water? I don't know. But I I really, I I would be, if if we're going to have water here, I want it to be something we as a city are doing. And I don't think like a political letter rises to the level of being a a whole driver in and of itself. It should be part of infrastructure.
If I could offer just a little bit on the water issue, just to just to make sure we're all on the same same playing field. We've been looking at transferring water out of Lake El Estero for many, many years, and that's been a process that that people looked at for people before I was here. And so it's, it's it's something that's been going on for quite some time. And I think that from a staff perspective, putting and retraining and and saving water into the Monterey One system and getting it treated is very easy, very doable, and actually not that expensive. What is a challenge is expecting to get that water back to Monterey. To have that actually delivered back to Monterey as part of our potable system, that's the political aspect that we need your help on in trying to to solve that. Putting it in a pipeline and getting it there is simple. We can do that with all of our projects. We can do it Pacific Grove best. But we cannot literally get that water back as an allocation process it's treated.
Doesn't PG get their water back?
Not to my understanding. They they push it in there to keep it out of the out of the sanctuary to keep to, it's it's an environmental process. They keep it back. They got an allocation, but the ownership aspect of it is difficult. The ownership aspect is difficult.
PG PG get gets some allocation back. They they also sent the water to their old water treatment plant that they have at next to the golf course. So and and they, the, so there, 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 there was a existing infrastructure and with they channeled their water back and could could retain that. And the water district grabbed something from there and some is retained with.
Didn't seaside just get the same thing, taking their golf course off potable water and into and they got credit for that? Lots of credit, actually.
Yeah.
I think there's something to be said about aquifer storage and recovery as well. I think that 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 in of itself needs a lot of support. And so even if we weren't able to get all the water back, I think for us to be able to contribute to the regional solution, I think is a benefit in and of itself. And it's Monterey stepping up and saying, hey, look, these are examples of what we can all do in order to help this regional effort. Because these are regional issues at the end of the day. So whatever we need to do to support that.
We are going to wrap up at 11:30 to allow time for public.
We are going to wrap up at 11:30 to allow time for public comment, case our members that have joined us since we started this morning. So we wanted to see if there's any final comments before we round around the bend here. Other thoughts about anything that we've discussed? As Han said, there's work to be done, you're going to get another bite of this apple when that's been flushed out. And pardon the pun, considering the water conversation, it just lends itself, doesn't it?
Right.
Thank you.
Just don't flood us with too much information.
Here we go again, come on, you just saturate this whole group.
You're leaving behind dry.
Don't drink the Kool-Aid.
I'm still up behind the ears.
So I I just, I just wanted to offer a a closing remark because I know that it it does feel painful sometimes, kind of going through a strategic session. And and it may feel like, what did we really solve around actually doing anything? But I particularly appreciate this discussion. I feel like it's made it made us better understanding where each other are coming from and actually understand that we're probably more on the same page than we were when we walked into this space. So I I appreciate it. I hope that this kind of helps drive the 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 strategic level work that we do as a council with staff. I know that we had committed to before taking a study session, one study session out of every quarter. I'm not sure if that's the right pace. I'm not sure if every quarter we we do want is right, but I think we need to be committed to whatever it is that we come up with. And right now it's every quarter. So if we want to change that and alter it, I know that we did that for COVID, but we never really talked about it. So I think if if we're going to change the methodology that we kind of, we as a council need to be responsible for making sure that we're sticking to that. And to me, that means that in December, hopefully, we're coming back and having something proposed by staff in regards to having the drivers be aligned with the vision and the mission and what we've talked about today. But anyways, I just wanted to say I appreciate it. Thanks, everybody, for having this conversation because I think it's completely worth it for the long term vision of of the city. Thank you.
You may recall some of my opening remarks on the third, I appreciate you that setup there was this process would would be productive, not necessarily efficient. Right? And those are not the same thing. And that I also, when I spoke to you on the phone and I reminded you on the third, if these issues were easily solved, you would have already done them. So the nature of this conversation is there's a lot of variables. And part of your role as a community builder is to be a good critical thinker and a good creative problem solver. And I would say critical thinking and creative problem solving are part of the same ecosystem, even though some people think they're different attributes, they are, but they're part of problem solving. That's what you're trying to do. You're trying to understand how do you blend these resources to address these issues? How do you mitigate their impact? What can you do intentionally? What can you do sort of under the guise of partnering with other jurisdictions? I think that the conversation that you had about how you're going to, how aggressive do you want to be? How assertive do you want to be? Some of that depends on the nature of the issue, how systemic that is. This, one of the takeaways I hope that you have today is that you carry these conversations forward. When you're at council meetings, the exchange of ideas is really going to be one of your strong suits. Many of you mentioned that to me on the phone, not that, not that everything's a 5-0 vote. That's not always the measure of a group that works well together anyway. So I wouldn't say that use that as the rubric. But when you have these patterns of having good exchange of ideas, listening, being patient, one of the words we we talk a lot about today is collaboration. Collaboration requires patience, which sometimes is not always our strong suit because we're so busy trying to share with people. Part of that is to listen to understand, not always listen to reply, especially in the political arena, which I think there's kind of a rush sometimes to offer your point of view, and that's the nature of that sometimes. But I hope that your takeaways besides the content of your conversation is also to increase that collegiality and professionalism in your conversations with your colleagues that you can continue to go forward. Because that's going to be where those those challenges are going to be pressured. There's going to be controversial issues on future agendas, and people are going to say, why'd you say that? Or why'd you do that? Maintaining that decorum and civility and respect and courtesy is a a strong suit of all councils. And that's going to serve you well when you have really tough issues and you still have a lot of tough issues on the horizon. Use these two half days as a reference point, as a source. I hope that you found is a way to exchange ideas and to listen because it's not just, it's not just one person that's going to figure all this out. It's a lot of collaboration and it's a little messy. So I just offer that to you as well. I hope you have that as a good takeaway and reaffirm some of those thoughts. And the other final thoughts before we turn it over to the mayor and public comment, yes?
Yeah, I just want to thank all the council members and the mayor for putting up with all of our comments from each other. And I think that the 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 dialogue and being able to drill down into the meaning of your words is very valuable for me to hear. I appreciate the staff's work that they do leading into this, and I know that much more work is going to be coming. Thank you very much for all of the staff. Much of the staff is is not here, we see our directors here and the city manager, obviously, but we have some staff that are in their offices that are participating via Zoom. And we appreciate you all as well. And the many staff members that will be touching this and helping to contribute with this because, as they say, the answer is in the room. And if we expand the room and include more people, we get a much better solution. So I appreciate all the ideas that have been exchanged and very much appreciate all of the the city employees that participate and serve the community. And we don't get to see how much they do. And having been a city employee previously in three different cities, I understand and appreciate the the nuances of all of the service levels that happen 24 hours, seven days a week. And it's big, and I know that this community appreciates all your efforts. But thank you for your your work.
Really well said.
Well said, I really don't have anything to add. It's good for us to remember that it's our staff who do all this work and make this the city that we all love. That's a great place to live, work and visit.
And 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 play and play, right?
Dan, Dan, were you, you're good, okay? Yeah, no, it was very valuable. It's the Monterey way, and I must say, over my experience over the last 40 years, that the collegiality, respect that that we've had over with the council and the community, it's really a role model, I think. And not that we're perfect, but the mere fact that our last meeting, we had some folks say that they wanted to watch and participate. So staff responded and we have a Zoom meeting. And so I think that's an exact excellent example of responsiveness and following up. And speaking of following up and transparency, Nat, do we have any public comment from anyone who's been watching?
Right now, I don't see any hands raised, so we'll just give folks a couple of seconds if they did want to speak, get to do so, to raise your hand.
Sure, and while we're waiting, we always are very open to suggestions in writing, email, suggest@monterey.org. Where was I at some meeting where I said 20 years from now or 10 years from now, people are going to say emails, what are those? I'm in trouble. That's the main way of communicating. So anyone yet, Nat?
No, no one with their hands raised.
Yes.
But we did, we have had some participation, at least watching, so.
Oh, good, we had some folks watching, and of course, this is available on our website. And and as we leave, and Ed put it so well, we're going to leave and I'm going to go home pick up my grandson and take the dog for a walk. And meanwhile, our staff's going, oh, here we go, and have a huge list of things to do. And so we do appreciate it. We know who really helps run this city so well. So Patrick, thank you. I I really, if if you think about value drivers, the way our discussion went, obviously, water is a value driver, just the fact that that is something that's so important to all of us. Right? It was, the things we talk about are the things that are important to us. Then the next question is, what can we do and what we can't do? And then that's what we'll have Hans talk about. So that that's really good clarification of how the process works. So everybody have a wonderful weekend. Thanks so much.